I'll call the city council regular meeting to order. Cheryl, would you do the roll call?
Councilman Greenmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bash? Mayor President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
All present?
Thank you. We will now recess a closed session to consider the following matters as listed on the agenda. It doesn't sound very strong at that evening. Good evening, I'd like to reconvene in the public session. We'll have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the city just considered the matter listed on the agenda in closed session.
Thank you. If you please rise, we pledge allegiance by House Speaker Greenmeyer and then remain standing for the invitation by the name of the president.
Ladies and gentlemen, please bring me a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer, so I encourage everyone to stop for a moment and pray for our nation. And tonight, I would like to utilize the prayer from our 40th president Ronald Reagan. So good God with me, and pray for our nation. And as I read this prayer, "To preserve our blessed land, we must look to God. It is time to realize that we need God more than he needs us. We also have his promise that we could take into heart, with regards to our country, that if my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin, and will heal their lands," such as Second Chronicles 14. "Let us, young and old, join together, as did the first covenant of promise and the first step in humble our God prayer. Let us do so with the love of God, his great goodness, in search of his guidance and the grace of repentance in seeking his blessings, his peace, and the resting of his kind and holding hands on ourselves, our nation, our friends, and the defense of freedom in all mankind now in coldness. The time has come to turn to God and reassert our trust in him for the healing of America. Our country is indeed um and ready for spiritual renewal. Today we utter no prayer more fervently than the ancient prayer for peace on earth. If I had to pray for you today among those that have been uttered, it is that we, the one we are so familiar with, the Lord bless you and keep you, the Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious to you, and the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. And God bless you." Amen. One second. Amen.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, we have one proclamation tonight, and this is for May is Mental Health Month. And I hope I pronounced this correctly, Alicia Arrendondo. And I will meet you right up front. And Alicia is the Senior Peer Support Specialist for Riverside County Health Systems. I won't read all the whereas's.
Andy, can you flip this mic, please?
Thank you. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and encouraging awareness of mental health and promoting wellness and recovery for those living with mental illness are important values for every community. I therefore, Greg Newton, Mayor of the City of Norco, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2017, as Mental Health Month, and call upon local residents, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses at all stages, and especially before stage number four. So, congratulations, the city council of Riverside of Norco. Would you like to say a few words?
I would, I would.
Great.
On the behalf of Riverside University Health Systems, I'd like to just thank the City of Norco for your support in our event. We will be displaying this at the event, and I brought some flyers for everyone. The event will be on... On May 25th, and it'll be at Fairmont Park, and we invite you all to come. It's going to be from 1:00 to 5:00. So I brought some flyers so everybody can participate. And actually, it's the month of May is May is Mental Health Month, so we have a lot of stuff going on around the city of Riverside in the different areas. So again, I'd just like to thank you for all of your support in our event, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's go to city council communications reports on regional boards and permissions. Kevin?
There was a bunch of stuff. First off, upload, we had a woman named Opal Singleton that talked about human trafficking, which was one of the most illuminating and amazing plots I've seen. I mean, I had no idea that was going on. And she gave some pretty interesting stuff. She is the, I guess she's the director of two groups. And the one is Million Kids, which I'm not sure which one. She has a radio show and, you know, sort of tag team, if you don't mind, or talk a little bit about it. It was, because he's familiar with how Riverside County works and stuff. I mean, it was mind-blowing, because I had no idea.
Sure, I'd be happy to, and thank you. So part of the unload's commitment to the community and working with our youth is keep everybody apprised of the things that impact our youth. And one of the discussions we had, and this is a continuation from the discussion, it's not only pertaining to drugs and alcohol, but cyberbullying and bullying at the schools and the campuses where they attend. And mirroring that is social media, and how social media impacts our youth. And not always in a positive way, but it can be a negative way. And how some of those youth are basically trapped into what we call human trafficking, where there's people, there's predators online that can trap, traffic our youth and lure them into an underworld of prostitution and human trafficking. So she works with our special investigations bureau, she's a very valuable asset. We do have, the department Riverside County Sheriff's Department does investigate human trafficking. And sometimes those investigations are basically rescue missions to help get those kids, often under the age of 18, very young, out of those, those basically negative lifestyle changes.
It's also really dangerous, because the people running these things are bad boys, gangs. If you sort of snitch on them, or you do get away, they may track you down. I mean, it's a very scary situation. But amazing, in fact, maybe one of these nights have her come in. WRCOG, we had lots and lots of fun there because of the new energy program they want to put together in which they sort of make energy a local thing, where different cities and cities band together and they create their own energy supply companies. And a lot of people come in and tell us they had no morals and all kinds of stuff, that Mr. Trump was going to get us, and how dare we create a bureaucracy. It was strange. RCA, not a whole lot happened. We purchased some more land, and because the economy's good right now, there's a lot of whirling sellers, there's a lot of money out there, so we're completing the, want a better word, the channel for the animals to go from one point to another. That's what we're trying to do, is create like these, best way to say is gigantic trails. And we did some very important linkages over the last couple of months. I was at the senior center, once again, Brian, maybe does a great job over there. Was real happy about that. And then, I think that's about it. I went to a lot of meetings, but those are the most, those are the key ones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted?
I attended the West Riverside County Regional Waste Water Authority meeting. We approved the budget for the year. And again, Greg, thank you for letting me attend those meetings.
You're fortunate to watch.
You're going to hear it after all the time.
The experience is going to do.
Wonderful experience. But anyway, their budget's quite expensive, but the good news is they expect that the plant expansion project that's sitting over there off of River Road and just inside Eastville will be completed within the year, and hopefully the completion will be in December 2017. And they're expecting that to be up and ready by then. There'll be some changes naturally, and hopefully lower our cost with the completion, but we'll have to see, wait and see how that comes out. But they're excited and getting it done finally. And so we, also, the Veterans Day Committee, we are finishing up the Memorial Day program. For those veterans, for those here not, or for you have veterans or no veterans, we are still taking up, veterans, to sign up for the continuous salute that day. Please join us. And if you need more information, it's on the city website, you can call. And other than that, we, a few of us met right after our last council meeting, Justin's sitting back there, but we got to be with Assemblywoman Cervantes, and we showed her some of the highlights of the city, took her for a tour, the memorial along the Sorelacks and City Hall, and drove by the, you guys were at Oakdale, but we drove by separately, okay? She will be there on June 10th, I think, or adjusted. So just, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Only a couple items. Well, the last Thursday, to the law enforcement appreciation award for our deputy Medina. Mendez received the award for the deputy of the county, the county deputy of the year, which is quite an award. And let's see, RTA. Did everybody see the trolley that RTA had in the Horse Day Parade, Horse Week Parade? Yeah, I heard about that. Anyway, they're going to replace five of those. They've had some of them since 1994, and what they do, they use them for short stops like Riverside, they run up and down there and take you from one parking lot to the courts and back. So you don't have to walk, and go to Marietta and to Mexico and everything, but they're going to replace five of those, and the rest of them will be donated to cities like we got a little bus from, and they get them, we have to give away. One thing that RTA did, we worked on this for about a year, and never could get an Eagle Scout to take this project to build a new bus stop up here at the senior center with the cover on it. They didn't know why they wanted to do that. And so RTA had budgeted for a bunch of new bus stops with bench and covers, so we now have a new one up here at the senior center that they finished up leaving last week. And so we should drive by there and look at it. It's been real nice, especially when they're covered, and people have set the sun. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Burman. Remember about the rest of you, but I'm just whipped with the last week. Couple of things that all council attended last night was our volunteer dinner for all our wonderful volunteers. Parks and Rec did an absolutely great job putting all that together. On Sunday, Kevin and I attended Bethany Lutheran Church, it was their 60th anniversary in Norco. And it was a good sermon, I'll put it that way. I think, Kevin, you feel the same way about that. The other week, I spoke at Tiger, the Island Empire Real Estate Association, basically did a presentation on our low-cost housing programs and water rates and sewer rates and all the interests that realtors have in Norco, and that was very positive and a good meeting. And then, also last Saturday, I had an opportunity to attend Assemblymember Cervantes' get-together in Corona, and there were representatives from the city of Corona in the Arupa Valley. And that was pretty interesting. So, and just a whole bunch of other little things running around town. So what I did want to ask is, Justin, do you have a very brief report on anything that the assembly members working on? That you'd like to share?
I do.
Please step up.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, just reiterate, the tour that we had a couple of weeks ago was very nice. It was great to see some of the, some of the spots in Norco. First of all, the SB, I'll talk about legislation, SB 132, the trailer bill for SB 1, the transportation funding, was signed by the governor. And that will include $6 million in transportation funding for Norco over 10 years. So that has been signed. It's been, it's been a very productive couple of weeks for us in Sacramento. The Assemblymember's AB 296 passed through the Veterans Affairs Committee. It will create a task force on women's veterans' health to study the unique needs of a growing population of women veterans. Also, in the Veterans Affairs Committee, AB 1618 passed, which creates a process to certify organizations that provide services to veterans, also authored by the assembly member. And the Assemblymember's Bill, AB 226, which would expedite the process of teacher credential for spouses of active U.S. military service members, passed on the Assembly floor, and so that will be moving on to the state senate. And AB 1200, also the Assemblymember's Bill, which would establish an Aging and Disabilities Resource Connection Program to better connect seniors and their families with services and support programs, passed in the Assembly Committee on Aging and Long-Term Care. And those are the highlights. So, thank you. And the community copy, thank you for coming out.
You're a lord and welcome.
And we thought it was, it was quite a success. It was a great opportunity to meet with constituents, so.
Just one note, would you also make sure that you're watching a couple of bills for us that are in committee?
Sure.
That if you, if you would follow up or follow up with our city management, those, the ones on the cell phones?
Yes. And the cell towers, yes.
On the cell towers?
Yes. In 1250, yes, we've...
Contract.
Right, we flagged both of those for our Sacramento team, so they were all well aware, the Assemblymembers were all aware of Norco's position on those.
Keep us in the loop, Mike.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, city council consent items? Any council members wish?
I want to pull C.
C? F, Burman? Any others? I'll entertain your motion. Second?
Councilmembers, Greenmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2C, Kevin?
I should have called you, I just have a couple of questions. On, I've been busy. So the old Get a Grip building, they'll let it stay there years, and then they have to remove it, is that what that is?
Yeah, what they allowed is for the building to stay there in addition to the, so it's basically in addition to the original scene that required it to be removed and get rid of that, so it can stay for a year.
Is there a possibility that it'll stay longer, does she want to move it, does?
They will have to, the way it stands right now has to be moved, so prior to that expiration date, they'd have to come in and reapply for some due diligence.
And then, 2, 2C, C with, what, how tall is that building? How did that go down? That's the 1900 square foot recreational vehicle storage and workshop. Did that adhere to the current, what we're looking at now, or how did that go down? I see it's a 3-2 vote.
Yeah, it was a 3-2 vote, and the two that voted no were opposed because of the size of the structure. The height is 18 feet 2 inches.
So how big is the property?
It's 30,000, it allows seven votes.
What's the setbacks on it?
To the rear, it's 7 feet because of an easement back there. To the north, it's 5 feet. And then to the south, it's, I don't remember, but it's quite, this is the south, it's in the San Antonio.
Is there people on the side of the 5-foot setback curb?
There is.
Is it set way back, or I mean, why did three people vote for this? I'm not making judgment, I'm just curious.
No, they voted, the reason why the three voted for it was a number of reasons. One, the building, where the building's going to go will not, not really impact the neighbor to the east of them along Walker Horse Rash Drive, because it's already been 2 blocks in the way. And they felt that the design of the building, they agreed with the design of the building, that it matched enough the architecture of the house, and that they, they felt that the size was okay for the size of the property. And it, they liked that, in order to build the structure, the advocates wanted to remove an existing basketball court, which eats up a lot of open area and product. And it's also taken out a hot tub there, or no, barbecue area for the 15-foot access to the accessory room.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question as well. Going back to 2A, I just need clarification, because the wording on it is, in my opinion, quite conflicting. If this is going on the record, I have some concerns. So in the first part of it that's not bolding, it says to allow an existing temporary modular building to remain as an event lounge on a permanent basis, and that's got CUP number 2017-09. But then, bless you, we go down to the action part, where it talks about the modification that allowed the placement of the modular building for Get a Grip. Number one, I have a problem with it still being referenced, because of my understanding that hasn't been there. Get a Grip hasn't been there in years. Yeah, and then extending the time period for the unit to stay there for a maximum of one more year. So within that section A, we've got two conflicting things.
The first one is just the title of the agenda item. The non-bold print is just the title of the, of the agenda.
Okay.
And the, the action is still there.
All right. I still don't like the way it's written, for purposes of, you know, because people go back and read these and reference these in different cases, and if I'm having a hard time understanding it and I kind of half-wake in what's going on, you know what I mean?
That was a confusing one. It could have been written on the cover, so.
As I could, perhaps you read from the agenda, it was a little more confusing, because the applicant for the expansion of the restaurant use really had nothing to do with the modular building. Other than that, they just did occasionally for overfill, but it really missed curves and they felt that it took a different number of years to decide whether or not they'd just turn down, but it really wasn't there. If business was great, it would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to say the same thing, though. When I read that, I took the action that the planning commission was looking at, was to approve that on a permanent basis, and then the final action is a maximum of one year. So it did... That the request was to do it on a permanent basis, that was the proposal? And that was denied?
Yeah, basically, they denied that and said, you can keep it for one more year, but after it's done.
Was there any discussion on septic to sewer? That whether, the verbal history has always been, if there was ever any expansion or work done on the golf course or the restaurant or clubhouse, that they would be required to connect to city sewer. And I don't know if that's an old wives' tale that just had been around forever, but was there any validity to that statement?
Now, if, yes, there is validity to the statement. What was required, the actual requirement was, if there was any expansion, if they... Well, the code requirement, let's start there. Code requirement is that if you are within 200 feet of a sewer line, you have to connect. Now, they are within 200 feet of a sewer line, the property itself, but the building is quite a bit farther away than 200 feet. So the, when the clubhouse was built, there was not, that I would call a requirement, that they connect to the sewer system.
There had been no conditions given on the golf course itself to connect to the sewer, meaning the original previous. I think generally there was discussions, and when the whole housing club came in, etc., that there, eventually when the homes came in, the sewer lines would be close to the property, that they would connect at that time. But there was never any conditions on either the development project and/or the golf course.
I mean, because I always recall the conversation, so if you, I remember the first discussion, the council said, okay, since so far, we're not just moving it or essential clubhouse use. But planning did have that conversation?
Yes.
In this regard, that's all.
But they were required at the time to put in an extra-large septic tank. The septic tank is absolutely humongous, so.
Okay, any other further comments on item 2A? Item, do you want to go ahead and put A?
I see.
No, I'm sorry. C. Forgot it. I didn't know if you wanted to do this one separately or not. Start from the front, okay? Start with your front, okay? C.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion was made by, uh, Councilmember Bash and seconded by Mayor Person Hoffman. Councilmember Spud Meyer?
Yes.
Hannah? Yes. Bash? Yes. Mayor Person Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two F, Berlin.
Yeah, I just have a question for Chad here. Well, notification to people on that street about what's gonna happen to put the storm drain in, and those staff went out and talked to the ones where he could dip to the doors, the ones that had fenced the gate with dogs. Did the letters get mailed out to the people?
Yes.
Notifications? Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I'll, I'll move to approve that. Out of the mouth.
Councilmember Spud Meyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Person Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, item four, public comments. Do we have any cards?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I have one card. Pat Overstreet?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I want to firstly thank the city and the Parks and Rec Department for a delightful volunteer appreciation dinner. We appreciate that we're appreciated. It was very nice. I also want to invite you all to our eleventh annual Northville Regional Conservancy Ranch Tour, coming up on May twentieth, eleven AM to four. Again, seven great ranches, uh, including, um, pony and carriage rides. Really does a wonderful, uh, highlight of our lifestyle. And what's neat about this particular tour, we have three ranches that have a lot of history, um, connected to them. And, um, there are ranches that were kind of in disrepair, and they've been, been picked up by families and refurbished, and it's just wonderful what they've done on them. And it's just great to participate in that. And my third reason for wanting to say something tonight was, um, I want to officially request somehow on the record that we form an urban forest policy of some sort. Hemmets got one, Redlands has one, Corolla has one. Steve King and I have planted trees in this city that we've watched die. We need to replace the, the trees as, as removed, and I understand why they're taking them out. But I also saw a perfectly gorgeous Canary Island pine at the, uh, second and hammer on commercial property at the, uh, seven-eleven. It's gone. I don't know why. Uh, just a perfect tree, unencumbered by any wires or anything, and I drove by thinking, that's such a beautiful tree on that spot. It just does wonders for the, for the area. I belong to the Relief Organization. Uh, Steve King got me invited, uh, to join this, and I have kept up my membership. So, I get their publications, and the cities everywhere find grants and whatnot in order to plant trees. So, I'm hoping, you know, according to Relief, tree, and we know this already, I'm just stating the obvious, that trees improve our air quality, uh, water quality, health, transportation infrastructure, quality of life, we shade natural beauty. So, we've had a program in the past when, I guess, times were, we had some money, then there was no money, but we need to do something to get these trees replaced. I don't care if it's a one-gallon bucket. I mean, we, we have to start somewhere. And, uh, you know, in ten, fifteen years, we'll, I'm just driving by some of the newer areas like where, uh, Councilperson Hoffman, Lee, it lives, and, um, a few other, uh, the Hillport portions. In nine years, the trees have just gotten enormous. So, I mean, they're not being watered with, with, you know, they're groundwater now. So, we can have a, a nice urban forest again. We need to have a policy. We need to do something about it. I came to your budget meeting today, and there were no, um, public comments, so I went home and I'm back requesting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And before it's all the comments?
Thank you. Item number five is a legislative matter. Uh, there'd be no new evidence. Will be heard from the public as the public hearing has been closed regarding this item. And then this, uh, is various, um, ordinance numbers ten nineteen, ten twenty, ten twenty-one. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a brief, uh, report to go over basically what has happened. And they included in the ordinance is from the, um, first reading, and these were approved. Briefly, the changes that were approved at the last meeting, uh, were that lots that have a pack upon them are not required to meet the graduate separate requirement. That was approved for the rest of the animal keeping lots in the city. The, uh, washroom restroom was changed to be fifty square feet minimum and, uh, no maximum size on that. The architecture of the building, or the architecture requirements and guidelines were adjusted to allow for barnacular in the design. And that it has to be approved by the Architectural Review Subcommittee before it goes forward to the planning commission. The next one was that, uh, the building where the applicant is proposing an RV dump, it's an RV building, obviously, and/or a restroom inside the building, and it's a property that's on a septic system. You have to, the applicant first has to provide a septic system analysis by a septic system engineer showing that the existing system can accommodate the new, uh, the new facilities being added to it, and if not, then the applicant would have to connect to the sewer system or they would not be allowed to add the restroom and/or RV dump as part of their building. Uh, the inspection requirement was changed so that, uh, now the applicant will be conditioned such that upon a twenty-four-hour notice of violation, uh, they're, uh, they need to allow for an inspection by city staff to make sure that there is no unauthorized use that's occurring pursuant to the approved requirement. So, oh, and then there were two additional changes that came out. Uh, this was added to the ordinance as well as to the administrative policy. Uh, one is a biannual review of disordinance and, and the status of the process and number of applications that are being received and how it's working. And then the second one is that there'd be training of the new regulations for staff and, uh, the decision-making bodies. And that new training occurred for new staff and for, uh, any time that the regulations are changed from this, uh, biannual review. So, those were the principal changes from, that were included with the, uh, first reading. And so, this is the second reading of those ordinance that's all included in.
I have a question, could I ask a question of you, Judge? They, when he said, when he said that, uh, utilizing the Architectural Review, as I understand it, they would be directed to go to the section of Architectural Review. Because previously, they'd been told not to go there. So, I'm not sure that's included. So, they, so there's a guideline? Or is that already implied?
The, the regulations that have been included in the, in the attached ordinance has already provided Architectural Review requirements. So, the, they can certainly use it in their review, but the, the guidelines and, and, um, requirements are listed in the applications themselves and in, and in ordinance, and that would be the primary driver in their review. That doesn't mean they can't look at the rest of it, but, but that's why the, that's why the applications were changed, and the ordinance was changed to add more architectural direction in the, in the process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, my understanding is they are supposed to utilize those three pages. I'm a little concerned.
Well, there's nothing that says we can't.
But, uh, but I, I felt that it was supposed to be in the ordinance that they would be directed to go there along with those additional things. Mr. Leonard?
Well, I mean, I can tell you what was, most of your was supposed to be, but I think Steve's recitation of what was actually adopted is, that's the only thing that should be considered tonight. It's the second reading. If you, I mean, if you want to, let's see, the simplest way, if that's a concern, you can bring that back as, uh, an amendment to the ordinance at a future meeting.
Or it could be reviewed in six months.
Yes.
That, that, but I'm quite certain that that was supposed to be referenced.
Well, you can, the other thing is adding to the administrative policy.
Okay, and you know what? In six months, that's why we have the review to look at it, and we will look at the administrative policy. So, that's all I have, basically. It was just a question.
Ken? Can you remember that this is the second reading of this discussion? Rob? Go.
All right, so I have a little bit of a concern with that because my impression after meeting the last meeting was, once it was transcribed, we would have this to look at. And then if there was a concern or a change that needed to be made, that that could be done tonight. Is that now not the case?
Yeah, that's now not the case. I mean, in the sense that, I mean, certainly you could do that, uh, but what we do is set for a new first reading.
Okay, because that's not what I interpreted at the end of our last meeting.
I think that it's legitimate if, uh, the discussion is simply that, that what Steve said didn't accurately reflect what.
And I have a couple of those that I've noted. So, I guess I need to know where to proceed because I'll just bring one, for example, um, in reference. On page two, where it talks about, um, the inspections. The way I read the inspections, number four, it just says, we can do what we want as long as we give twenty-four-hour notice. My understanding was that our intent was only if there was a code violation would we want an inspection, and the way this reads, it says we can go in whenever we want. It makes no reference to a violation.
I think it does have ordinance. Now you find the.
So, it's on the second page, Steve?
Uh, I see in the staff report, but I think it was just actually this.
They weren't the twenty-first rule.
Steve, I want to get away from it's implied because then we get people's personalities and all that stuff involved, and and things don't go the way they were implied to be, or they do, you know what I mean? I just want, the more clarity we can add to these, the better off everybody's gonna be, the council, staff, residents, everybody. So, I don't want, well, it can, it can be implied. I don't. It's not.
But the way it is in the, in the actual ordinance, it says all accessory buildings approved with an accessory building whose permit shall be subject to immediate inspection by city officials upon a twenty-four-hour notice to the resident to ensure that no unauthorized use is occurring pursuant to the.
Yeah, it's the same thing. I have it highlighted there as well. So, that's where I have issue with a couple of these because I've got a few things noted where I thought we were gonna be able to make amendments or whatever the case may be tonight after reading the document. So, when are we supposed to do?
Well, do we notice it for, first, because it sounds like there may be some substantive, you know, for some, for some. That's alternative number one. Alternative number two, this is, uh, Kevin, uh, the six months you can do it. Yeah. Six months, you can do it.
I've heard you, Mr. Member, you can put it on.
Six months. You can't hear a law?
I can.
So, the alternatives are, one, give direction and we notice it for a future first reading. Two, as Kevin has indicated, that one of the areas of the area, it's going to be reviewed in six months, citywide, and use that opportunity to amend it to, uh, any issues shown yet after reflection. Free, uh, take recommendation that those issues come back as a separate, immediate amendment to the ordinance without having to go through all the, go through the issue. Do you have any other items you would?
Well, my other, the only other thing that I wanted to address is I have some concerns on the titling of the specific sections in the chapter because I thought the other intent was going back to specific use. And I think that the titles on these lend themselves to specific use, and I know there's been discussions where if you want to build a building that meets the specifications of, like, number one is titled Large Vehicle Parking Building. So, that tells me if I'm resident A, well, gosh, I can only park my RV in there. But we had talked about it at the last meeting, if I want to have a wood shop in there, or if I want to have something else in there, well, that's, well, that's okay, but then we go back to that whole implied stuff that I'm just not interested in having it. If they're not breaking the law, I don't care what's inside the building as long as the building is within the footprint that we asked for. And within the other stuff, and by putting these titles on here, we're making classifications of stuff that it's not our business to be in, and so that's, I have a hangup on that as well, and I'm just a little frustrated with the process, I guess, because I misinterpreted it last meeting, or I didn't understand at the last meeting how this would go. So, those are my, my two things, where use and clarification of rules.
If it were, if it were as simple as titles of the sections, that's essentially clerical, it's not substantive, so if you wanted to make those changes tonight, you could do it. And I don't know that that will solve the problem necessarily, which sounds like it's greater than, 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 you know, clerical changes.
Let me chime in on, on the titles of the buildings. That really is all, all it is, is the title of the building to help differentiate what the design or the development guidelines are for that particular building. It doesn't mean if you build an RV garage that you have to go out and buy an RV to park it. As long as you keep it residential.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, as, as long as you keep it residential, you can put your, your, your table saws in there, you can put your animals in there. As long as it's residential, it's all consistent with the residential use of the property. When it becomes a violation is when you turn it into a commercial business.
Right. Okay, well, then I'll just throw one other, two other things out there, then you guys, I guess we'll figure out how to do it, but, uh, on the very, on page twelve of the ordinance, it talks about for any building drainage and/or restroom, it goes on to talk about the septic system. Can you clarify for me what building drainage means to you?
What was that page?
Uh, it's on page twelve of the actual ordinance itself. So, if you go down to letter K, which is in primarily blue.
Yeah, the intent of that was similar to the restrooms and, and RV dumps. And if you're building a building and it's on property only that are have septic systems. If you're building a building that has a drain in it that you want to connect to your septic system, you first have to prove that the septic's system can be.
So, that's only implying or discussing interior building drainage, not exterior?
No, it doesn't say building drainage. So, if, if you propose a building and you're gonna have exterior drainage related to that building for whatever reason, and you're gonna connect it, and you're proposing to connect it into your septic system, you first have to prove that your system can be.
Right, and I get that part, but here's where I'm gonna go with this one, Steve. A lot of the buildings that we've had on appeal, people have been talking about, it disrupts the flow of water during a rain event. So, drainage has to be taken care of. Again, this is one of those things that it's not clarified, in my opinion.
I guess, I would like to point regards to, when it comes to drainage, a building, it should not go into the septic or sewer.
Right, right.
Because any drainage, whenever you're going to overwhelm your septic, and we definitely don't want it, unfortunately, many people do have it connected to sewer and it overwhelms our sewer system, so drainage from the building out exterior should go surface flow out to the certain order, the binary, and, um, it should not go to the septic or sewer.
Right.
And the, the, well, the purpose of the section, though, I think, is in those buildings which have septic and, right, use a septic bowl to drainage issues, which generally would not be a problem with, with sewer system, septic system, this, this sewer, that you have to be able to show that the septic system can handle the flow if there is any, and that additional restroom for it.
And, and tagging on what Chad just said, when you threw the exterior, you kind of threw it for a little bit. This was written based upon comments that people wanted to have washbacks, but perhaps. But this was written based upon comments that people wanted to have washbacks, perhaps, inside of buildings. So an interior drainage, that wood is proposed to connect to a septic system, we have to first demonstrate.
Okay, and I, and I get that, and maybe I'm just being nitpicky, but I'm just thinking back in my head to what we've had to deal with since, just in the short time that I've been up here. And I just want to try and have clarification. And then the last thing that I'll bring up is on page 14, number five, where it talks about the storage of equipment and chemicals. I thought we were told that there is not a list regarding residential quantities. If I am mistaken in that, if you would, is that correct? Okay, so I don't want that referenced in this ordinance because there is no such list. So if my neighbor thinks that I shouldn't store X number of containers of paint, who's gonna enforce that, or who do they call, or whatever?
My recollection of this, I don't know if this is chief's or my recollection of the discussion was, that while there wasn't a list, that there are still types of chemicals and amounts of chemicals which are not permitted for residential use. Or sort of residential. That's what I'm sort of- Is, is it okay for the chief to make a comment on this? Well, it is a staff question.
Or Rob, if you want to answer more questions, chief-
Yeah, that's alright.
If that exists, it'd be regulated by a better requirement. It is not, anything we have in production, the fire department, anything that is published to us or anything related with the fire, or comes to residential.
Yeah, but it could be the, the county department, which has their own separate issues. And that's a question.
When you get quantities, it's when it requires permits on a business aspect. It would have been part of the residential aspect because you wouldn't have those quantities unless you were doing something that was per business relevance.
But, but if you had, but if you did have those quantities in the department, whether they were stored in residential or commercial, they still have the requirement.
You'd ask the fire department. This relates to the fire department, the fire department, there is no, yes, that's a residential issue.
Thank you, chief.
Those are my issues right now. I don't know how they're going to be solved at this point.
Please smile, Steve. You're not gonna be happy with me- For, 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 for Robyn, I mean, one thing that you can do tonight, if you believe that what you acted on, let's say, for example, the discussion we just had about drainage issue, if you believe that's not what you proved, or that the language needs to be modified to reflect what you did, we could do that. Because that's what you adopted at the last meeting, and the idea was to bring the language back in. So that, this can, I'm gonna make substantive changes. So with some, I think, I see some of these items, like what Kevin brought up with architectural review. Kind of agreed with Kevin. I wanted to see the architectural review committee have a little more teeth with this. In, in reading that, I don't feel we really give it in that, that as part of the ordinance gives that direction. The, uh, the inspections on accessory buildings, uh, I'll concur with Rob in that. I think we were pretty clear that that was to be complaint-driven. And I think I would still like to see that verbiage in there.
Except, except that there was a long discussion on that. John directed us away from that. And the reason he did was because he said it could, what was it, John? In other words, if you all of a sudden entered it into the whole system, it could take you months to take care of something. And as opposed to giving you latitude anyway. Do you remember that discussion?
Well, I'm a bit, sort of broadened that, but that, one of the reasons why, that was, I'll be sure of the C process as well. One of the reasons why you wanted to have access with notice was so that you don't have to go through the process of getting an inspection warrant based upon an allegation of a neighbor that there's been some code- that it just simplified the process. Doesn't mean, uh, that's a good thing or a bad thing, but this allows you, and it was limited, the language of this is limited to the use. Uh, and as a practical matter, that means you're not allowed to use it personally. Uh, that's, if it, if it shifts, I think Steve had this discussion, that we're talking about this after the fact, that if it shifts to the complaint base, uh, for those of you who remember Barbara Carmichael, uh, that's kind of back to where we be, that neighbors, it's because it modified the points, but instead come to the council and, and, and process that way. And it ended up resulting in the city having no code enforcement for it. It just became a management. Uh, this wasn't intended to allow inspections for code enforcement violations because we have a process for that and the laws. It was intended, and this is what I thought it was intended to do, was allow us to go in if there was some reasonable suspicion that the use was not the use for which the building was permitted, i.e. accessory. Is there a better way this could be worded?
Just looking at substitute for, for, for sure that you won't hold that, which is our priority.
Hold up. I have a few other items, so.
Is, is the intention?
Yeah.
So, so we can, we can, because I have a bunch too, but, okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I have that, so.
Still concerned on some of the titling with "Large Vehicle Parking Building," and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this into use, that we're, we're not clear that if, if I come into use, Steve, and I want to go, "I want to build a thousand-square-foot workshop, okay?" And I agree with all the setbacks and architectural design. I don't have any issues with that at all, okay? Uh, that I agree with. But I want to build a thousand-square-foot workshop, but I have to now title this "Large Vehicle Parking Building." Am I correct in that assumption?
For establishing the design criteria for the building, that doesn't even have to park it, or have to have it parked.
Right. But kind of out of the gate, I'm not telling you the truth, anyway. Let me fill out the app for the large vehicle building, uh, I'm gonna build a workshop. And, so, that part starts to trouble me, and then I apologized because I started looking at it further and further. In that thousand-square-foot, can, can you build demising walls? In, in the, in the thousand-square-foot large, uh, vehicle building?
If you're building a, the way it's written right now, the large RV agricultural parking building, the only walls you can have in there are for the restroom.
So that kind of then troubled me a little bit more. Just let's say I have a smaller RV. And, but the other half, I want to have a workshop. But I don't want the sawdust to get on my RV, so I want to build a demising wall. And that would be a code violation, by the way this is written.
Yep.
So I have some heartburn on that. And then, just then, that gets me more into the bigger picture of use, that I'm really comfortable with what we did animal keeping-wise, as far as our square footages and our ratios. And I used different examples that, uh, one project going on in town that, uh, it could identically be built with this new ordinance, that's a large building, animal keeping. But then what troubles me is, and you and I kind of talked about it, maybe 90% of all the half-acre lots, this works. All our lots are different. And then I get to the acre and a half, the acre and fifteen, sixteen, the two-acre sites. And let's say on a, uh, I'll just use a one-acre site, yeah, 10 animal units, right? So I can build 2,500 square feet plus or minus, animal keeping. But I can only build a thousand-square-foot RV storage, right? With a 400-square-foot pump for the, the workshop. If I'm still under my 40% in all that coverage, I could, I could increase that RV storage building by X amount of feet, as long as I had a 10-foot separation between those two buildings.
Yeah, it would be a separate building. You could extend that building, but you could build another.
Right. Now I'm starting to think that's silly. And I apologize for that. If I can build a 2,500-square-foot barn, why would I, and, and I can make all those numbers count, why do I have to build two buildings till I get to 2,500 feet? And that's where I think that perhaps I made a mistake. And should have caught this much sooner than tonight. Because I, um, the more I look into it, the more I question the use of it. But I also understand the, the trouble we try to, that in all the effort we go through to try to make an ordinance work, and the difficulty is, with all our different properties, it's always seems to be subjective. And just trying to get to the objective as close as possible, knowing that we'll probably never achieve it. But, but I think we still have a little more to go. So use is my big thing. So, I'm kind of looking then for a direction. We'll go, we'll go back to-
Yeah, and they are subsequent.
I was gonna say, go back to alternatives. Alternative number one is, if you vote on this tonight, passes are valid. Even if it passes, alternative number two is that, this is why I can be real- First of all, it says it for you in six months. Doesn't mean you can't review it in a month. Bring it back any time you want to. If you pass six and nine, it's like, hey, we have something in the books now. And remember that we have an moratorium issue, that we have applicants for it. That's alternative number two, is bring it back a seven-month, or six months, or a month from now. Alternative number three is start over again, if it passes, first reading. And I don't have any problem with making certain that the additional language that Steve added tonight for the second reading accurately reflects what you, your action was at the first reading. Since you haven't seen the language before, uh, language, my definition is always somewhat ambiguous. And if you can make it less ambiguous and still change what you were, uh, first reading, that's- Yeah, then at this stage, last reading is for a certain, uh, first reading, some direction. It sounds like, as I said, that there, if, if there weren't substantive issues that'll come up tonight for the first time, I would suggest that, you know, we can make changes to reflect what your action was on first reading. But it doesn't sound like that works at least for one of you. It's a charter issue. It's how it works, it requires a four-fifth majority, so it doesn't really matter what point you have. So, we do have a recommendation, uh, to adopt ordinances 1019, 1020, 1021 for a second reading. First, I just want everyone to know that recommendations are-
Oh, you say, are, are there things in the language that Steve has provided which you either can openly, accurately reflect what your action was on first reading, or can be worded in a way to better reflect what you were saying first reading?
Yes.
If you want to go through those and do that, as long as it's a given, and those are already done, then you can go on tonight.
But if there's-
But if there's substantive issue, that's gonna have to come back in some-
Then I have substantive concern. Okay. I think, Mr. Rob.
Well, if, if everybody's got, if somebody's got an album or they don't, why don't we vote on it tonight? We need to come back and change the wording on it and get it where everybody likes it. Not waste another four hours of that, like we've had the last two. Because that's what this is gonna turn into tonight.
Then, then my suggestion is maybe you take this document and have a workshop. And so, through the language, make sure that it does reflect what you can, like we did with the foundation for the- And then reschedule it for another.
I have a question, because Kevin brought up the architectural review, or his concern, which I thought was made something that we all agreed on in the last one. Is that a yes or a no, that we can do that tonight?
If, if, that's the case, it's your impression, that what you voted on at the last council meeting on the first reading included reference to the architectural review guidelines, whatever section they are in the code. Yeah, you can do that, too.
Okay, then the next one would be on the inspections.
Yes, and, yeah, that, yeah.
And the verbiage can be changed tonight for that, correct?
Yes.
And then my last one would be, uh, the reference to the storage of equipment chemicals.
One of the things about that, you're, you're kind of not correct because there's a building that we approved that's actually a chlor- a pool chlorine storage. It's got probably 700 cases of chlorine storage, next to about 100 bags of manure. Guess what? You have a problem because that's highly flammable. That will explode. So my point is, is that I think when we're talking about that, we're talking, there's certain state laws that will kick in, that, that, that will occur. If you're talking about settling and things like that, you know, probably the settling isn't that they explode, it's that people don't handle them right, and they scorch the eyes of children. That's what happens. So, there's nothing you can do about that. Um, but if you can figure, so, so I think state law covers that. So if you just find a way to make it palatable so that it's, it's, I don't know, I don't know how to do it, but it, it just seems to be, just needs to, needs to be clearer. Because I don't remember, Robyn's right, I don't really remember a list, I don't remember that.
No, there is, and I think it's pretty clear there was one. And I don't, and the fire department considered, with some, I know there was some confusion early on, that there might be.
I just think there's things that-
It's a reference to the fire department. We don't have a list in the fire department, where you have your house, but the state does, and environmental-
Right, right, right.
You can't park a 10,000-gallon tank or a chlorine inside of your house.
Right, right. I mean, that's what I was referring to.
But it's not in the fire department. So that's what I'm, I don't have-
But it's something that you would get involved in, if it-
Absolutely. You can call 911, tell us that your neighbor has this and that, and we come up with environmental health and produce disaster.
How about just adding the language where it says at the end of that? Because this is what you tend to, uh, the storage, the term safe, uh, is determined by applicable county and state law.
And that would be fine, because then that gives folks someplace to look, or someplace to reference. I just don't like it where there's no reference point at all for the information.
And that'd be just what you're saying. And that'd be just what you actually-
So if we can make those changes, I think I, I would be comfortable with- So if we can make those changes, I think I, I would be comfortable with title changes and stuff like that, maybe at the six month mark. I don't, I don't know, it's obviously up to the group, but those three things for me at minimum.
Go back to the first one and make sure that we have language that says.
The first one was architectural review.
Yeah, you simply, you, what is it, 18.1, whatever it is, there's the architectural review.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we know where it goes specifically tonight and what it's going to say. And then, because it's just reflective of what you've already done.
Well, yeah, it's listed in each of the three types of buildings, the architectural reviews. So we would just reference the chapter that.
What section is it in in just one of the proposal places?
Uh, 11, and that is it's on page 10 of the ordinance. The one that has the, all of the changes you mentioned, and it has page. Page 10, the one that shows the changes.
Okay, then we'll say, add, add to the, into that sentence, pursuant to the requirements of this ordinance and of.
What is the answer?
That was.
Can I say that again?
What's, what's the architectural review?
Is it, it's not 18.45, 18.45 directs you to 18.52, 18.
It's earlier. It's, it's a lower number.
11 or 12.
Yeah. I can't. Okay, so we'll say pursuant to the requirements of this ordinance and section 18.12.
Architectural.
Okay, and that's, that's what you did last week, so it's okay. So what's the next one?
The inspection. John, is there a way that we can still have a clause where we can even get access, but it is pursuant to?
Oh, that's your, sorry. We're looking for the inspection.
In the actual work.
Okay, let's, let's go back then to discuss what you believe is the council meeting at the first reading. Was it complaint based, I mean, just whatever you want to do. Was it complaint based?
I'm just seeing where the campaign is going.
In.
City officials ask to have.
Right, but this is what we talked about was versus a CUP where you put the conditions on. So with this, and this is what I asked Steve, this is the approval of these accessory buildings, could that be a condition to ensure group use?
Say something like all accessory, because this is what, this is what's approved. All accessory bills approved with accessory bill, this shall be subject to immediate inspection by city officials upon 24-hour notice to the residents upon a complaint that there is an unauthorized use occurring within this structure. Is that what you, is that what you believe yet?
I just want to, basically that's, but I understand. But I understand that putting that in there so we have access because under the force of this whole long run of problems, I just don't understand, can you have both of those factors at the same time or is it one or the other? Like, because my understanding is that I call in and complain that the mayor is doing something illegal in his barn. Okay?
No.
I second that.
I know. But if I did, isn't there a longer process involved in getting access to his property versus if we have in here under the permit process that we didn't have to?
Absolutely, that was the purpose.
Can we not have the 24-hour access that is initiated by?
Yeah, I think that's what it.
To that was just, you're not going to come blocking out my property. Rob, you also had drainage, does that seem to be a certainty anymore?
I remember the discussion of the wash, interior wash rack, so it obviously makes sense. I just, I've had muddy waters before, I just don't want.
Oh, I correct that, I just, but I say internal drainage. This right now says building drainage, what do you say?
I'm not sure that's what we're saying though, uh, with this section. I mean, maybe it is.
It is.
But we're talking about internal. Let's, let's, let's say that there's a horse rack that's not inside the building.
Am I right?
So, so the only thing that, that you were concerned about was internal.
I just wanted to clarify if it was.
I mean, the council, I'm looking at.
No, I just wanted to clarify because of prior issues that we had. We've talked about the runoff basically from buildings and when it said building drainage, just wanted to make sure that.
Maybe for the purpose of this section saying internal makes sense. That, that is what you intended as opposed to, because drainage in general terms, the great stuff is covered in the provision.
See, I think this gets compounded because I don't know if this is really what we make folks do. When Disney had their wash rack, we may have jumped through all kinds of hoops. How is there's different, um, tents?
The reality is every property is different. That is, that is why you can't put, it's not cookie cutter, that's, we've said it several times. It's not cookie cutter. And unfortunately, people wanted to be fair. It will never be fair given the size of your property and how your property.
And I certainly agree with you on size of property, but not on a, a fixture, a function. And a wash rack is just that.
But with, I mean, I don't know if this is, I'm just questioning with Disney. But did we do more essentially than say, you're going to have a wash rack and you're going to have to have an engineer tell us that it will work with the septic? Well, they're not on septic. Oh, so they were, then this section, this is only applies to septic. I mean, that's, that was the purpose. If you're connected to sewer, then it's a, it doesn't.
And that's. If you have floors, you have building drainage. Building drainage should come out, okay? But you wouldn't want building drainage to be associated even if you had a sewer. Exterior. Correct. You don't. We agree there.
Yeah. That's why I was, if we just say internal drainage.
Yeah, right.
You said septic.
Doesn't. So is that?
It just compounds, that's, there's, back to what Kevin says, in one sense that it was different. We had clarifiers.
So when you did two, Disney's issue, they were doing wash racks outside. It was trying to verify, because again, the large one, it's not just a couple horses. So it was just trying to verify that as they're doing their process of washing out horses, et cetera, they're being conditioned to make sure that effectively try to retain that material on site the best it could. Obviously, if it was too much or not, it would, it, that was the whole point of that. So it was filtrations, drainage, et cetera, that they retained on site. It wasn't necessarily about whether they're connecting a sewer or not, they didn't have to connect a sewer for the, for the wash rack. This was only we talked about because the question came up, what about somebody who asked that? And how do we deal with that issue if they're adding more usage and the settings aren't big enough? What do we do? In this case, the point of all this discussion is to try to make sure that maybe an engineer's analysis determine whatever internal usage you would have, whether it was a bathroom or a wash rack, that the septic system could handle it. If it can't, then they either have to, they have various to expand or they have to connect correctly to it. And this was, that was the intent, because we were talking on septic, not just a general usage of any building if you're already on.
I don't think we'll ever get a agreement on this, there's too many variations.
I mean, abuse. Pardon? It's too far. But are there context of the animal keeper building that's subject to this program? Are, are there lots of variations? Cause that's really all we're talking about is this specific structure. And if you have permitted bathroom or a major wash rack inside this structure, that it needs to be certain that the septic system can handle it well. But it doesn't apply to any of the certain. Is that a function of properties, differences or sizes or selection of the bathroom? Or trucks inside, this is going to be permitted as a system.
John, why don't you put that to the building drainage, just put floor drainage? Because a horse rack, water does really move forward to rain and goes down. It'll wave the building, it'll wave the word building up there. Be less, be less confusing.
Well, we can get away with doing tonight is reflecting what your action was at the last council meeting. That sounds like it more accurately describes what you did.
Well, like Robyn said, you get, different people can take different means to the building drainage. Like runoff and roof or the heavy rain, you know, coming off there and everything. It's a whole different building, washing your horse or your car inside that.
Internal.
Interior floor drainage.
Interior.
Floor, floor drainage.
Interior floor drainage, that's what you're going to say. Was there any other? So I think that the only issue which was raised, which was a substantive issue was.
I do have a question. I found this and it does have like the, I think at some point we need to look at the, the architectural section to see what applies. I think planning as they go through this, but it's 18.41, then it's 18.4110, eight. When you say 18.41, does it mean the whole section? Just wanted to make sure. But I think it's six months or I think we need to look at that section. But for now, I'd like to include it.
I think that based upon comments of the council person, that's what the action was adopting first reading.
Also that all these changes can be, we have this written that can be reviewed in six months.
And it says.
Actually.
Actually, the purpose was to make certain that it was reviewed in six months. That doesn't mean it can't be reviewed anytime. It's a month or two months or three months. Six months is mandatory.
Cause that's really what we, what happened was is we got busy doing other stuff and we didn't review what we did 2010.
So the what's before you to now is this, the first reading document with the clarification language that simply restates what approved at the first reading. The first one we're going to consider.
Just go through it to the same.
But there would be just. That province, that, that drainage septic issue and inspection issue and.
Architectural.
An architectural issue.
Oh, yeah, that, that it's a clarification, we're referring to state law or county law or whatever law kicks in
The recommendations are in front of you. So I'm going to go ahead and, any other further discussion? I'm going to make a motion that I think we still have a little bit more work to do. And I'm going to make a recommendation to go back to a first reading. You're either not a second.
Can I, can I have a question? If it goes back to a first reading, can I get clarification of what that means?
It means that the ordinance, it starts with the name.
With public comments, the whole.
I make a motion to approve with the changes, with the clarifications rather, the ordinance as it stands.
Councilor Hannah.
Yes.
Yes.
Banch.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Newton.
No.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, staff. We'll go to item 6A.
Okay, so this is just a follow-up to a previous meeting we had in March. We gave the council an overview of the remaining traffic calming amendments we're going to add to North Avenue between Crestview and, and California. This is just, and there were some comments that received it that meaning, want to get some better clarifications and some modifications on some of the equipment. So we're going to go through what those changes were. Hopefully this meets all the concerns of what council would like to see on North Avenue. And we can get direction from council forward on these, on these recommendations. and we can get direction from council forward on these recommendations. So this is, again, a generic review of the project area. You have California here, you have Crestview there. The area we're talking about improving is this area through here, the medians, the parkway, the stop sign, and the drainage area up here, as far as the monument sign. So what we're proposing, we talked about before, was, again, doing monument, and that would be located right here on this median here, there's plenty of room for that. We originally had it a different size, the next slide we'll talk about that, it was about 12 by 12, we reduced that. And then, the second element is to remove all the existing wood horse trail fencing, and we'll put the white vinyl fencing in, so that'll be done there. We're also looking at putting trees along the parkway, about 20 feet apart, off center, basically to enhance that vertical element, and that'll be on both sides. And then we're doing median improvements here, and again, we'll go through each of those in a second, and then we're also looking to put a stop sign, eliminate a stop sign here, to make sure we deal with the folks that are driving this way, maybe not paying attention, and going too fast, recognize or stop there, and ending up in this poor residence home. So the next slide here, this is, again, the monument sign, this is a basically a mentorized version of the one we have currently on Hamner in Detroit. The general intent is to, you know, be a welcome to Norco, it also can facilitate, you know, a directional sign if we choose. Again, we can put it there at the beginning, we can tell folks that, hey, that Ingles Park is down Crestview, et cetera, where you just, again, just says, welcome to Norco.
Down Crestview, down California.
Keep in mind, people go that way anyway, because they don't, they use their phones, so.
Don't encourage.
Yeah. The, so again, we've shortened it down, it's basically going to be about 10 feet high, first is 12 by 4, and it's not 12 feet wide, it's a little bit more than about 6 and 1/2. And so it's, it'll be fairly small, it'll have small profiles, and it won't block any the visual concerns that Robin presented before. And it will have solar power elimination, again, we're, this has to be refined as far as the actual design, because there's no electrical out there, we're going to put some floodlights on this that are solar powered, so people see it at night, et cetera. They're not shown here or not, when we do an actual RFP for this, we'll have more precise designs of how this is being constructed, but we wanted to give you a visual of really what you're looking at. In regards to the stop sign, again, we're proposing here, we're going to do a small median island right here, and that's where this stop sign will be placed, it'll be illuminated stop sign that had this solar panel on it, there'll be a second one right here, so there'll be two right next to each other, clearly people can see. What we'll do is we'll stripe this section, it won't be hard median, we'll just stripe it, and then it leads to this hard median right there. And that's the basic change we're going to do in this area here, as far as to try to better illuminate this area. We've already gone through and actually done striping in this area, so the striping's already basically done as far as the stop, the legends. But the, this part here will be re-stripped to make sure it clearly kind of shows that movement that's going to follow along, people to recognize, don't go too close to the area to hit that median. So that's the change we're going to do there. Now, for the center median, we're basically, is going to, is copying what we did on Hamner out here on Detroit, pretty much verbatim. The center median's got the same trees, those are all Chinese pistachio, we're going to do some miscellaneous, draw taller plants, we'll add some rocks, because it's a much wider median out there, so using some of the rocks will fill in some of that area. And also I should mention, BrightView did this proposal for us, they're here. Paul Bird from BrightView's here to answer any questions we have regarding the trees and the plants, what's going on, but they came out, did a full study there, what we're looking for, so all these suggestions are from BrightView. But this is what we're recommending, this is our only recommendation as far as the median, is just to duplicate what we did on Hamner. As far as the parkway areas, which is where the new trail fence would go, so, I took liberties of saying a three rail fence, we're only doing two rail fence. But this is what we're basically talking about, is now, there are numerous pine, palm trees along that southern border of north, all those palm trees are going out. We'll remove all those palm trees, we're putting in, again, every 20 feet, we're putting in a tree. We've asked BrightView to give us three different trees for council to consider, and we'll move forward on that, but this is a conceptual drawings of each of those trees, and we'd like to get your opinion on which one you'd like to go with, if you agree with our plan of in doing not only the horse trail elements, but the tree element along the parkway. So the first one that we, that they've given option as a canary island pine, and that's how that one looks. Second option is a ginkgo biloba. And the third one is a tristania. I guess I'll confirm with Paul, are all these evergreen, or only certain ones evergreen?
Two of the trees are evergreen, the canary pine and the tristania are evergreen, and the ginkgo is a deciduous tree.
So, and that means that all year long, the evergreens will be present, they don't have any foliage and balls, but the deciduous, they have seasons where they basically will be bare of branches. So, give an idea of construction costs, so the entry monument, we've estimated would be about $25,000 to construct. Stop signs and striping that we discussed down, near California and north, would be about $20,000 total, because again, includes the median, striping, the two new signs with solar, they cost about $4,000 to $6,000 dollars each, just for the signage with solar. Landscape improvements, again, this is the quote from BrightView, that's about $72,000 to do all that work, which is the median, the parkways, et cetera. Trail fencing, we've estimated, we're going to, we, Public Works is going to remove all this system trail fencing, we'll use core prudes, as we did before on the peninsula project. It saves us money than having the contractor do it, most of the time has a higher price, so we're going to remove the fencing, we'll actually grade it, so it levels it off, because especially on the north side, it's really off balance, so we'll do that work and make it all prepped, and we'll actually put in the trail fencing prior to BrightView coming in and doing their work with the trees. The new trail fencing, we estimated about $27,000. The palm tree removal, we've got an estimate of about $12,000 to do that. And we also have to put in a water service for all these plants, both the median and the parkway, and the city will do that. The estimate to do that is about $15,000, we're going to have to hire a contractor to come in and put some sleeves across the street. We're still working on whether or not those will be two inch or four inch, depending what BrightView needs, but that's what we've estimated for them, of course, to do that. So at this time, total projected cost is about $175,000 to do all that work. What we also want to do is make sure, we mentioned it before in the, in the previous meeting, for the budgetary, we talked about annual maintenance related to this project potentially being done by BrightView. What we are recommending is that this project for future mains, because we do, are going to spend the money to beautify this area, and we want to make sure that upkeep occurs. So we're recommending that we put this area on a contract with BrightView, using the existing contract we have, to do that, and that would include the median landscape irrigation, they maintain all that, the parkway trees and irrigation of the parkway, they'll maintain all that. The trail, they'll actually maintain that trail on both sides of the roads, if issues occur, they'll take care of that, just like they do in the LMDs. Even graffiti, if we have one long white wall in the northern section, if things occur, they can actually maintain that area too, and remove that material as part of, under the contract. All this will be done based off the square footage, so we have to actually, I don't have a pricing for yet of what that would be, because we have to actually measure off all that square footage of what they have to maintain, and then agree to gather to do that, because we may decide that the extra square footage for, let's say, the wall isn't worth it, because Public Works could do that graffiti rule if we had to, you know, and we may not have that, because really, we pay for it on a square footage basis, so it's, we pay for it regardless, so if we never have a graffiti issue out there, we're paying for them, the potential it could be. That's an area we may decide, and we'll pull that part out, but we like the trail maintenance part and everything else they do. With that, if I may answer any questions you may have?
Let me ask one first, was, I thought we had sleeves under the street into that island area.
We have not been able to find any.
Right, but in all our meetings, we've had that, that we were told that there were sleeves.
Yeah, you've got to remember that, there's no sleeves, only in the reason, we haven't been able to find them, because again, that median was poured.
Right.
It wasn't constructed in there where we could bore under it, or even cut in, there haven't been, we haven't been able to find any evidence of any sleeves there. If we do find any in this process and review, we would certainly use them, and our costs would go down.
And originally, that was looked at as a temporary type of median, and that's why I believe there were no sleeves put in, at down.
It just may come as a shock, but I know we had discussions with Bill Thompson, that there was always sleeves.
I don't agree with Mayor on that, because I remember those conversations.
Yeah, well, again, I can go back and try to clarify, Bill, if you can identify where these sleeves are, but as of now, we have been able to not identify any sleeves in that area. And again, if we do, it just reduces our overall cost.
Burrow, any questions?
Yes, sir, a gentleman over here from BrightView, he gave us option of three trees that, that means we just pick one, and that'll be what'll be used on all three, on both sides and down the middle.
Just on the north and south side, the center will have the Chinese pistachio to match the Hamner median.
Okay, and these are, fit our climate and weather and all that, all three of these?
Yes, sir.
And, Captain, these are all approved trees currently that are available to use, like in the LMDs, they're commonly used.
Right, and they're hardy for this territory then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Robin?
Chad, just a quick question, when we get items like this on the agenda, and like for this one, there was just pictures and stuff, is there some way we can get some type of a report or write-up, just so we can kind of digest up a little bit before?
Sure, and again, I, I do want to clarify, unfortunately, I, we normally keep all our work in files for the clerk, and I have stored my pictures and things in the file, but those pictures never tended to go to you as part of your staff report, because it didn't make any sense. I actually created this, this presentation for today, yesterday.
Okay.
So what should have been sent, if anything, would have been this, with a staff report.
Okay.
My intent was to do a verbal, what I'm doing now, and review it, but that was my mistake, because again, if we put it in the file, the clerk sends it, again, it should be sent, so that was my fault.
Okay, so guys...
So of course, you have conflicting information in your own report, that's some of my old documents, exactly.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But your point is, we'll take it, again, so we can, we try to do a draft report that goes with the actual presentation.
Right, even if it's just something, because I need time to process, and we don't always get that when we're up here, so, but I do like what you've presented here, and it's obviously more clear, so, thank you.
Ted?
Reference to the Chinese pistachio, they're not evergreen, are they, deciduous?
Yes, sir, that's correct, they are deciduous.
So, the foliage, we're not going to have any foliage in the middle of the intersection, and the reason I bring this up has to do with the traffic calming thing, and we talked about this before, is I like the evergreens on the side, and partially the canary island pine, because it's, goes straight up, doesn't have a lot of branches already, and it's easier to maintain. The whole purpose of this thing is to create a traffic calming island, is to create a visual and a physical type of restriction, when you drive through there, to cut the speeds down. If we're going to have a tree, and I don't know, on the Chinese pistachio, the duration of its, when it goes dormant?
So it's without leaves for about three months?
So for three months, we don't have that visual or that vertical impairment, so essentially in the center median, except for the monument sign, when you first come in, and...
Well, I think the tree itself, when the trunk is there, it's a vertical element itself, yes, it helps when it's below.
And the foliage is on the end.
True, but what I think the key is, is in these traffic calmings, we wanted to, the median itself is the traffic calming measure, tree helps, what we're doing is adding the trees along the parkway, which really gives the vertical element, which keeps people away from the trail.
Correct.
So you're, you are certainly very much augmenting what you've already done with the evergreens on the parkway, and yes, the trees proposed in the median will eventually have leaves that fall, that again, that in the maintenance room, that will be maintained by BrightView, they'll keep clean, but again, it'll be a short period, but I don't, I don't believe, even right now, when you drive down Hamner, you clearly see those trees, when you're driving there.
No, I didn't, you missed my point.
Oh, sorry.
I'll go back to Robin, but, because when you go, and you go for your rocks, because I see you putting rocks in there, because we want that visual impairment, what I was going to suggest is make sure whatever hanks rocks up at Ingles you want to use, because there's a lot of them up there, use something that's going to be visually impairment on that, to create that tunneling, that tunneling type of a deal.
Yeah, the V large boulders.
Yeah, we want something, you understand what I'm saying, you want to get that slowed down.
Even the canopy of pistachio without the leaves, as it grows, creates visual impairment, even when it doesn't have leaves, because the branches are thick.
Okay.
You know, and so you have that, and one of the nice things about the pistaches, that as it gets into the fall, the leaves change color, as part of this.
Yeah, they look good, I'm, yeah, I see, down the hill, so I just, that was my concern, is something that's, one, easy to maintain because of that, and just so we make sure we get that visual restrictive appeal, because right now, we have nothing, and that was all. All right, and Bill did say that there were sleeves, you can hit it down.
We'll find out, exactly, I've heard it otherwise.
I know he says it's easy to take off, you just take the tractor, you scoop it up.
Yeah.
I believe he said there were sleeves in there.
Yeah.
I heard him say there's leaves too, so it's a bonus. The wall, I had mentioned last time, maybe doing a mural along that wall to make it look prettier, I know it's, I'm not sure whose property that is, but...
We maintain that wall.
Well, what if we did like a mural contest or something, it may look more beautiful.
The only risk we have is as soon as somebody puts a mural up, and then you, they, graffiti in your murals now are roughly damaged.
Yeah, the reasons came up, well, we met a woman who lives here in town, who's like in charge of murals in Long Beach or something, and they coped them with something, so, anyway, just an idea, that's all I have. It looks nice, I like the canary pine.
On the trees, as far as growth, which, which ones grow faster?
So, all of them are pretty much median growers, they're not super slow, not super fast. The pine, probably the slowest of the three, tristania the fastest, ginkgo in the middle. Ginkgos and tristanias and pines, they're all columnar trees, to the mayor partem's comment, they're all columnar, it's the same kind of shape, just different textures and appeal.
Let's say on the, on both trail sides, I like canary pines, so, I mean, if they're all grow about the same, that would be my vote for canary pines on trails. One thing I wanted you to touch base on, Chad, was on the north side, we're going to remove that wood rail, and we're going to reduce the size of the horse trail from 12 foot to nine foot, and create this three-foot parkway for the fencing in the trees.
It allows you to have a four-foot parkway. It allows you to be a four-foot parkway.
So that's...
But a four-foot parkway actually still gives you 10 feet, we measured it.
So we have enough to almost have a full trail then?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the palms go away.
At least these trees are, at least these trees will have a root barrier, so that doesn't impact the...
For the long-term maintenance, we shouldn't have any roots getting into the asphalt or anything like that. Like in this picture that you show, what's the additional cost to keep those sandbags in the storm drains?
That's free.
Is it, in case there'll be no cost for that? You'll never present one like that, again, I'm pretty good with it. Antigraffiti coating on the monument sign?
I'm not sure, we have to look at that as far as what could be done.
Um, I'm not sure, we have to look at that as far as what could be done to protect it, also we'll talk about that with Arcade in the design.
I think we should inspect that, yeah.
Yeah, we just have to look at that, see what's available.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we've done on the existing monuments.
I think the graffiti coats are, are good, but once you...
Once you do it, you're always...
Once you do it, then you have to put it back on again because it's usually a vegetable based type of material and once you clean that off, then you're not after it coated again.
So I understand that. As an alternate, right? Then it looks good.
I'd like to ask, is, is there a consensus regarding the tree along the parkways? And so we mentioned that you're okay with Canary Island, Canary Island pine, is there a consensus for that, that we go forward with Canary Island pine?
Tree, yeah.
Which is this one here? On the parkway. And we're okay with the monument sign and the size that it is where we're going to place it?
You've got Kevin, you've got your mind on the trees, right? Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Cheryl, are there any cards in this presentation?
No cards on the side. Wait a minute.
There's a card over there.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
You may, because I understand your passion for trees.
Well, I love the fact that they're considering Canary Island pines. My question for the arborists that's here is, the other trees, how much maintenance do they require as far as trimming every year? Once the Canary Island pines go in, I can tell you that the one on Hamner Avenue across from Stater Brothers hasn't been touched since it was put in. It's perfectly shaped, it stands the 90 mile winds that come through. The one that was blown over by a car wreck, they finally replaced that, it's finally got trimmed and is looking good. But I would prefer personally, and it's just my personal opinion, we canary island pines everywhere, have that western look. Nothing looks more western than a pine tree. That's why I dislike the palm trees on public property. They're not very western unless you're in the Baja California, so, um, I love the idea that you're considering Canary Island pines, and I would want to see them everywhere in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to answer that question on the maintenance on the other trees?
So the pistachio will require the canopy to be lifted, also the cars can see through it, and some minor trimming, but really relatively little trimming will be required, especially in the early years. As they get older annually, they'll need to be thinned out a little bit. The trees will be, in the median, will be strategically placed so they don't block the current speed feedback signs we have in place in both directions, so obviously they won't be in that median area, so they could have seen a turn in the corner, avoid more herself, so that would be fine.
Just to add a note, if it goes to a maintenance contract, then the trees will be maintained up to 25 foot.
Any other questions? Comments?
I appreciate the direction.
Do you have a direction?
Yes, I do.
When will we start?
Uh, we'll start as far as going into an actual design for some components, other components, we can just start immediately as far as removing trail fence, et cetera. We have to go get quotes for the monument sign, we have to do an RFP for the trail fencing, pretty much all the other work will be done by the city or training. So, we'll coordinate, have a project meeting, figure out what steps we want to get done first, et cetera, but again, it'll be a primary project for the first part of this fiscal year, for sure.
You go ahead and start looking at construction zone speed limit signs now.
That's a great idea.
Probably be a little bit too early.
For a warrant.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Anyone need a little break? Are we ready to do item 6B? Follow-up discussion regarding traffic signal 6 in California.
This item I did prepare a staff report. And so again, this is just a follow-up to our March meeting, where we did talk about, there was an issue presented in one discussion by council related to previous traffic calming measures we placed in California and 6th, and that was going from a protected left turn to a protected permissive left turn. Since that time, there have been several accidents that have occurred, like all of them, well, the sheriff identified it was driver error, um, as far as people turning into oncoming traffic, making a left turn, or excessive speed, potentially on 6th, people going, um, and just, you know, reality is forever. The question becomes now at this point, it was posed at that last discussion meeting, was originally was, this measure was made and recommended by the consultant at the time because the thought was we could pull cars away from Crestview and get more cars on California since that's the higher rate of speed road, it's a track, it's a truck route, spokes were complaining about too many vehicles speeding on Crestview. So the request of council was to do a, the follow-up traffic study in the same area we did the original traffic study. I would note, it's not the same time, maybe to the, as far as the period of the month or not, but it's represented. What we found out is actually, there was no noticeable change in the number of cars, in fact, it actually went up a little bit on Crestview. So with that, we would want to bring that data back as far as it didn't have an appearance that changed anything, one of the rationales of why we made the original recommendation to do this protected permissive turn. So at this point, it's a question we have to council is, do you want us to go back to the protected left turn, and that would be about $50, $600 to change it back, where the original cost was about $80, $600 to put it in, recognizing that, um, it was driver error, it wasn't anything that's fault that the city had done anything, but in regards to the fact that it is occurring, whether the city wants to err and set caution and put it back to a protective left turn. I'd welcome in your thoughts.
Thank you, Chad. Kevin, comments?
Do we get a guarantee from the traffic engineer can we get our way back?
Fortunately, it was only a recommendation.
True. Um, I recommend that we change it back. I almost got hit just the other day, I was going through slowly, thank God, the person made the left-hand turn right in front of me. I don't know why, it may be driver error, but for some reason that corner attracts driver error, it's bull. So I would recommend changing it.
Chad?
It's more, not so much driver error, it's the fact that you had 11,000 people drive through there, and that's, you're not going to get all good drivers. Who shows back Eric? Eric, probably the first three months that, that traffic signals in, there was accidents. It's been in how long?
A year.
A year? What's your rate of accidents there now?
I'd have to look and research, I didn't pull any stats for tonight because we had this discussion earlier, so I can pull that and feed that back to you so you have that information.
That's right, I mean, I mean, you get an idea, I had before, because you guys talked to, is there a problem in the corner now, problem intersection?
Well, I think what, what you have is, with the green, the solid green ball, you have the driver's discretion as to whether or not they believe there's enough room or not, and that's where I think the problem lies, and if you have the independent green arrow, then they, they can only turn with the green arrow, or the cross traffic isn't permitted to go through. So, I, I think what the issue that we found in looking at the traffic collisions is that it's driver error and it's based on their perception as to whether or not there's enough time to make the left turn, or if they're just making a left turn in front of oncoming traffic. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's...
That's, that's right. And my feeling is, I don't spend more money on that intersection, we got other things we have to spend it on. And so I'm, I'm just relieved with the way it is, to be honest with you, because I think when you let it go back, you're going to see more corners of Crestview. I mean, even though your numbers don't show it, I think it does deter some of them, I think, you've got, you can use a different time of year, you do your count, did your initial one of December, now you're looking at a March count, I just, I, I think it helps. And if people don't know how to drive, then they need to back to school and not to drive. That's all I'm saying, thank you.
Thank you, Chad, Robin.
So I know when it was first changed, we had quite a few, not quite a few, three or four, however many it was, documented accidents, and I think that's just, people are creatures of habit and they don't pay attention. My concern with changing it back at this time is now they've had a year to get used to what it is now, and then if we change it back again, I think we're potentially looking for more accidents. I know when it first changed, there were a couple of close calls myself going through the intersection, but the last few times I've been up to the park, it hasn't been an issue in my particular case going through that intersection, so I don't know that I'm necessarily for going back with the changes. I am disappointed in the traffic study. When a recommendation was made, we went with the recommendation and the outcome wasn't necessarily what we had hoped for, so I am disappointed in that particular aspect of, of the data, so, thank you.
Burman?
Well, I've been up there several times the last two weeks, and it's, my idea is, it's pretty dangerous going both ways. I think it needs to go back to the left turn there on both directions there because twice the people turned, I thought they turned a little bit too short or too quick in front of me coming, when I was coming back west over there, and, uh, I was going pretty slow both times and I almost got hit once with the field sign. I'd recommend that we put the arrows back up there permanently.
Now, it's, the light was changed to what it is today, it caught me because, and I wasn't used to it, and now I'm getting, okay, now I know what the deal is with this light, so I've become more familiar with it, which kind of goes to Robin and Ted's comments. Also, I hate to throw good money after good money after bad money, so that concerns me, but, maybe Eric, you can help me with this, that? With traffic and drivers and creatures of habit, if we were to change this signalization back to what it was originally, do you think we would see a few more accidents till people become used to it again?
Well, it's hard to say.
I know, it's just...
Changes are made back and forth, it's, I can see causing a lot of confusion.
Right.
So, again, I just think, and obviously this is for, for council to consider, is what's the lesser of the two evils at this point? And I really don't want to inflict my opinion based on, on what we're looking at, but again, with the solid green arrow, solid green ball for a left turn means that it's up to that person's perception as to whether or not there's enough time, and if they're speed safe enough in the oncoming traffic, there's enough space to make that left turn safely. With the green arrow, the independent green arrow, you're not giving that driver a choice. They have to follow, stop on the red, turn left on the green arrow. They don't have the discretion of worrying about oncoming traffic, if that makes sense. And that's, that's, that's what you would have to consider, what's the lesser of two evils.
People thinking for themselves or being taught how to? Well, we need to provide direction to staff, so, let's kind of go down the line, Kevin? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we change it back.
Are there any cards?
No cards.
Thank you. So...
Councilmember Hahnner? Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor for Tenhafen?
No.
Mayor New?
Yes.
And what she carries?
Thank you. Item 7A is a public hearing, ordinance number 1023, first reading, and... Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before tonight is a recommendation to consolidate the Parks and Recreation Community Services Commission with the Streets and Trails Utilities Commission. As part of our strategic goals and planning for this last year, one of our strategic goals was community outreach. Both these commissions provide that community outreach. In addition to that, part of our strategic planning is for us to look at our resources and streamline those resources to become more effective and more efficient. In a recent discussion we've had in presenting this concept to both commissions, there was much dialogue. Some of the dialogue that we talked about is one, how the commissions were created. The Streets and Trails Utilities Commission was established in 2008, and that was after a number of years where we had two separate commissions, one a Community Services Commission and a Streets and Trails Commission. Those commissions were brought together and into one commission, which would be the Streets and Trails Utilities Commission. The function of that commission was really to assist staff, advise staff, to look at capital improvement programs, construction standards, repair and maintenance, streets, street safety devices, signal crosswalks, stop intersections, school crossings, look at speed situations, and also look at trail systems within the city's bridle trail system in the city. The Parks and Recreation Commission was established in 1971. The goal of that, of this commission, is to develop the city parks system, open space system, to look at capital improvement projects, review maintenance standards associated with parks, public facilities, infrastructure, and promote recreation and community service programs, particularly youth, adults, and seniors, as well as to support special events throughout the community to enhance quality of life. When we met with the commissions, we talked about what the benefits are of merging the two commissions together. I think what we found is, is that there is a collective amount of experience between the nine existing members that we felt that would benefit this commission by its combined efforts. One of the things that stands out the most in my mind, as well as I think the commissioners and staff, was the fact that our trail system that we have currently in the city has sort of been kind of pushed to the side and forgotten about. And one of the things that was discussed very in-depth by the commissions was is that we really need to re-look at our trail system. For, one of the challenging items that I would see for this commission is the development of working with staff on a trail system master plan. The city that brags about its trails as much as we do does not have an adopted trail master plan. So what would be one of the goals of this commission, one of the primary goals of this commission? I think when we, when we talked about the functions of how these commissions would work, one of the things that they each do is they look at the, they each, they each have this one thing that brings them together, and that's trails, open space, and parks. And Commissioner Bash, we've talked about that often, and how that is a connection to our whole community. And I think when we look at that, that is really what, why people move here, it's about the character of our community, it's about that particular character and how it connects to everybody. It's what we brag about, it's how we want to create sustainability, we want people to come shop, play, and ride in our community. So I think that's a big emphasis. This, this commission, and one of the probably biggest discussions, they came from the, on the public works side, which was with the Streets and Trails and Utilities Commission, was the fact of review of street standards and looking at infrastructure and looking at water and sewer. I think it was very clear, and Chad can chime in on this, is, is that that's not the primary emphasis we would bring back to them. We would bring capital projects to them, or we would bring projects to them that has a connection there. However, when it comes to elements that are reliant on existing standards, particularly engineering standards, that expertise is already provided. What we would bring back is a review for them, or if council directs certain items to be reviewed by the commission, we would do that. But in reality, when we put a street line in, there are, there's, there is certain standards that are followed. So the Public Works Engineering Department follows those standards. It's not up for debate, we have to follow those standards. Or if we're looking at certain street widths and that type of thing, those standards are in there. One of the things that Chad and I talked about is about when we want to look at championing this type of effort, is that when we look at a street in the future or a major project, that we should also look at possibly the trail connection there. Can we get the trail and the street done at the same time in a larger project? That is something that we need to do. We have an estimated 130 miles of street trails in the city. Now, the problem with that is our trail map doesn't identify those, those trails specifically as developed trails. Some of them are undeveloped, but it's not clear. That's something we need to work on. Maintenance standards for our trails, we need to work on that. We talked a little bit about this at our earlier budget workshop, about trying to emphasize trail work and doing stuff on the weekends. It takes the community to maintain our trail system. It is such an elaborate system that, that you can go anywhere in this community, you can connect to the open space, you can connect to regional trail systems. It really, this particular emphasis and the work that this commission would need to do over the next year will keep them quite busy, in my opinion. Not just that is the only thing. It's also about the other issues that are quality of life, looking at how we work and program our youth and adults and our seniors. It also is about how we run our, the day-to-day business, both in the Public Works Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, Engineering Departments. We, we believe that if we can collectively join our resources in many ways, we can be more effective and more efficient, particularly at the staff level. The other part of that is, I think, the nine members who exist on the commission bring a variety of different ideas and thoughts to the table that would help both departments and those various divisions that are related to those departments be more affected to our community. As I started off, you know, the commissions are created to do outreach. Their, their, that outreach comes back to staff to help advise us so that we can have a process that leads us down a path to create a higher level of quality of life. And I think that's really what we want to try and do with these commissions. It also is about educating the commissions so that they can also voice back to the community reality. In some cases, and infrastructure was another big part of our joint meeting discussion, is that we have a deteriorating infrastructure. And we can look at it or not look at it, but if we don't look at it, and we don't look at ways of funding that infrastructure in the future, your issues are going to be greater and greater each year. Your costs are going to go up, they will not go down. And at some point, we're going to come to that point where it's not a decision about if we have the money or if we don't do something, it's about if we don't do something, we're going to close off these facilities because they can, they become unsafe. So we have to have a game plan that takes the commission, that takes the staff, that takes the council. When we talked about this in the joint meeting, I thought the commissions were very, what I want to say, very positive about looking at a way that we need to. Now, if that is some sort of taxing permit in the future to be able to fund that, they were very open to have those open discussions because they see the importance of that. They see how various items that improve the quality of their lives, that the trail connections that we do increase their property values. They, they moved here for a reason. And if we don't do something about those various integral parts, whether it's a facility that we have that we want to play basketball in, or it's a sports complex, or if it's a trail, or it's safe streets, we have to look at this. And we have to start with staff and the commission working at that and bringing that stuff back to you. I see we often trump size with Band-Aids on things, and we've had to do that over the past, but we have to start to paint a bigger picture for this community. If we want sustainability, we have to do that. And I think at the end of the discussion amongst the commission, which, by the way, they unanimously agreed to, for the council to consider joining these commissions together, I think they, they saw where the benefits come now. We've had the discussion, why nine members? Well, there's nine members existing. The nine members, though, I believe, bring a whole bunch of different ideas and concepts, as I said, and, and by the way, the experiences that each of them have that they bring to the table, when we were having discussion, it was interesting how some of those experiences cross over to each commission currently, even right now as it exists. So I feel there is, there is, both Chad and I have had a lot of discussion on this, and we both are very supportive of this move. And it may be a little bit demanding and taxing at the beginning, but I think at the end, it's, it's going to create a win-win for us and our community. And also, I think what it does is bring some vitality back to the commissions to expand what they look at in the bigger picture. Chad and I were talking about it, and I'll let him speak a little more in depth on this, but one of the things that, when you look at our, our budget and our trail budget, there isn't much there to do. We need to look at how we are going to engage and involve them. If we don't have things to bring back to the commission and then we don't have meetings, what good is that? What is good is to have that commission? So part of this combination allows them to look at our community holistically. This commission will have the ability to look at all parts of the business of those departments and assist staff on being successful. So I'll end with that, let Chad jump in here and put his two cents where it's at.
I'm good.
And I'm open-
Thank you.
Does council have any questions to staff? Burman?
No, wait.
Karen? Robin?
Brian, I just had one question, and I feel like I heard at some point in time, and so I just want to verify, you can tell me if this is truth or myth, that if trails were somehow integrated under the park system, there's a potential for grants and stuff. Is that true or false?
I, I would say that, that I would, they're, you're always eligible for grants, whether they're in the parks or not. They're part of our circulation, they're part of our recreational element of this, of this community. It doesn't matter whether the bridle trails are in the parks department or there is a public works department, they're still eligible for trails, for grants.
Okay.
Ted?
Chad, if those are sidewalks, would you take care of them? Would you take care of them if they were sidewalks?
Well, yes, it would be our obligation to care.
But those are pedestrian equestrian trails. And how much money do you throw at them every year?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. If you were sidewalks, you'd be spending about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year if you had them.
Really, only when there was issue, let's say, tree, tree overruination-
Tree overruination, but-
Other road.
But essentially, and I don't get batty, if that was a sidewalk, you'd be taking care of it. Let me throw this one at you, Brian. How many people is it going to take you to map out this master plan?
Well, one of the things that we would look at is we would need to bring on a consultant to help us with that process, and it takes the community to map out a master plan.
But generally, on your, you know, I'll rephrase your question. When you put people, I, I know how you work your Parks and Recreation Commission, is you separate them out, and you essentially, like I know Corinne and Jessica, they're on the master, they're on the Ingalls Park Committee, right? So you go send them out and do that. So essentially, you take two of your commissioners and you do that. So if you had nine commissioners, four of them just came over from Streets and Trails, you could send those two to go do your new standards for maintenance for these trails and your master plan, that would be your subcommittee, correct?
Yes. In fact, actually, we would, that, I believe that is a great model to use, this creation of subcommittees to report back to the general commission and breaking it out that way to work intricately with staff. Yes, I think that it works very good. One of the things I believe in is if we're going to have a commission, it needs to be a working commission or we shouldn't have a commission. They don't just get to sit in the diocese and do nothing. They have to be able to work with staff. If, otherwise, they shouldn't be commissioned, or is that correct, Commissioner Bash? Or, excuse the council, he wasn't commissioner.
Well, and I sat on that Streets and Trails Utility Commission and several, several meetings, all we did is we listened to our director right along, and I don't want to see that again. My question to you is, is this detrimental to your present commission? I know when I sat in those meetings in your Parks and Recreation Commission, you go through a variety of different topics, everywhere from senior center to when Piggy gives her report, you got Patty giving her report, you got Hank, you got Frank, they're all giving their reports. Are more people, is something going to get lost in doing this? Because you have, your commission wears a lot of hats. Is it, is this taking us on? Is that going to be a detriment to them?
Yeah, great question. And, and I think actually Commissioner Holder, during our joint meeting, I thought, did a very good job of talking about the importance of not losing the values in which was originally established with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And that if we're going to do other things, that we need to all buy into the, the big picture and work hard at preserving those things. And one of her things was, is that it was, it was about the adults, it was about the youth, it was about the children, that we are always working to make sure that we are looking now for their best interests. It's not just the trail, it's not just a street, but it's about those individuals and giving them the best higher level of quality of life that we can. I, I think that that comes with the commissions as they are dedicated. I feel pretty privileged that I have five commissioners who are very dedicated to what has established my code here. They believe it. We've all drunk the Kool-Aid, so we believe it, and they, and they're, you can ask them. They, they sit on committees, they work on these commissions, they work with staff, they work with our part-time staffs, and they are, they are not just someone who comes to a meeting once a month. They are there and they are involved and engaged, and I think that's the only way to have a successful commission. If, if this could, if, joining the commission, if they are disconnected, then I don't think it would work. But if they, we really put the right people on the commission, then I think it'll be, I think it could be a great experience.
Let me throw something else at you, and this is the one. Very, you know, Chad's got enough things going on his plate right now. And it, it does take an expertise to understand streets, it does take an expertise to understand utilities, the gardens, or, I don't, because there are times that you sit there and you go, my God, what is all that talking about? I don't want to hurt your Parks and Recreation Commission, because it's a good commission, it does very well. And my thought is, if we take Streets and Trails Utilities and change the title to Trails Committee, it's separate. I know that's going to impact you more. You have five people now on a Trails Committee that's working separate, working with, under a Parks Commission, but not part of a nine commission member. Just a thought. You still, parks are part of the, I mean, trails and the P E, I'm going to call it P E because that's what they are, pedestrian equestrian trails are still part of our unique system here in the city. Because if we lose those and they're not maintained, he's going to have to maintain sidewalks. Because that's what's going to happen, double out, because ADA is going to come in here and say, you guys don't maintain them, you better fix them. So would it be easier if you had a separate commission under your, your belt, that would be just trails? Rather than combining two commissions with a whole lot of subjects?
I think, Brian, there's, there's an issue right now fundamentally with the subcommittee and its functionality and what we're able to bring to them. Because there's, there's no lack of desire from the committee itself to want to do stuff. It's the amount of material that can be brought to them to, for those actually here on a routine basis. Because like you pointed out, the professional side of it, I would bring back to utilities items, because those are professionally designed by water, sewer, even streets, they're designed a certain way. We may, you know, in the future envision getting discussions related to streets about, because we know how a pavement management study, that's an engineered process that score streets basically tells you, which streets should be done based off of the deterioration and how they're currently rated. It's, we can talk with folks on the commission or just general public, saying, which streets do you think we should do? No one's going to agree because they want what they feel is most appropriate. If pavement management study helps us kind of engineering-wise, pick the winners and losers based off the cost of what they've done and the greater benefit to the community. So that's in that regard. If we take the streets out, say we took utility streets out, what's left is just trails. Again, we get into the issue of, that we mentioned before, we only put twenty-five thousand dollars in the maintenance of the trails. We don't have really any more functional money beyond this next fiscal year to do trail improvements, trail fencing projects. So my selfish concern is, in form of the benefit of my commissioners, is that I'm foresee in the future a lot of work for them to do in providing guidance, what should be done, because I know there's not a plan from the council's perspective yet that says long-term how we will fund those projects. So we can't have functional talks about what trails we should do, whether it's new trails, improving existing trails, rehabbing trails, et cetera, because there's not the, the backup at the end. And that's where it's kind of, we're be asking to do work, and in the end, there'll be no results, because there's no money behind it. So selfishly for me, by bringing in trails at least into this commission, it allows those folks to continue to participate, because that's what they want to do, they want to participate. And selfishly, if, if there's not a trail thing that month, they, they're participating in the parks discussion. They're all very smart people on this subcommittee. I have no doubt that they can catch on very quickly and be very productive with what parks is. They seem to be very dynamic on the park side from what I, the little what I've seen. I think they would welcome in these commissioners and help them along if there's any, any shortcomings as far as getting, you know, behind the curve and vice versa. They would do the same thing in any trail discussions. But I think there's a nexus between parks and trails that should belong together.
And, and I agree with you. And my point is, earlier this evening in our budget workshop, we just talked about, you just put a request, and I have two temporary part-time employees for trails. Or, you know, at our franchise fees that we did with Waste Management, we set on them, money was supposed to be earmarked for trails. Part of it, whatever the city manager could, could eke out of it, unfortunately, ripped it up for public safety, but money was supposed to go to that trails.
And keep in mind, I'm understanding right correctly, those two positions was to help the maintenance of weeds, not necessarily build up the trails.
Building trails, we're clearing it, but you, you missed my point here. The point is, he, he's got more interest, and I'm not faulting you, he's got more interest in the trails than you do. So he's going to take more of a leeway, he's going to take more of a go-forward a little harder than what you have. And I'm not being critical of you, just because it's his passion. When people have passions for it, they will find things for those commissioners, whether to send them out with this master plan or do a standard. And that's, I don't leave it at that. Thank you.
Kevin? Any questions to staff?
I don't really have any questions that, that, I've been figuring with this for a long time, and to Robin's point, Burman and I went to a, a thing where they talk about linkages, and trails are linkages. And what you, what, what the guy's point was, and we're already doing a lot of it, talked about it, is through your trail system, your, your community has become one gigantic park. And so it's large lots to trails, to open space. To his point, that's always been the problem with streets and trails, is that so much of this stuff is actually, has to be legally done, has to be professionally done. So I think that it's a good move to move it over that way. I think it's an excellent move. I mean, I sat on that commission for 10 years, and, and to be really honest, if I were a commissioner, knowing what I know, I mean, to get, to be in a commission with Brian is a huge plus. So I think it's a move that I would really like to see happen.
You did, I'd just like to add to that, both Chad and I work real well together, and probably worse- and probably worse so than us. His superintendent and my superintendent work real well together. And they really utilize each other's resources. So regardless of whatever we do, we try and look at this as a team effort. So just, I think it's important to know that we're already trying to do more and more of that as we go down the road. Okay. No further questions, staff? I'm going to go ahead. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No cards on the side.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. And bring it back to council for discussion and action. Berwin, do you have any discussion?
Since I have the cards, I'll go ahead and make my discussion now.
Right ahead.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll be standing.
Well, you better. Anyway, I'm against combining these commissions. I don't have a problem with putting the Trails over in the Parks. But it's like Chad says, on your Streets and Trail or your Streets and Utilities deal, that's more for your professional people, your designers, like you and Sam, it's about the Streets and the Utilities. But I think that by throwing that many people in there, nine or 10, I guess there's nine, there's one vacant, that it would slow things down. Because right now, I think our Parks Commission is the best commission we've had since I've been on the City Council. They're hard-working buds, they're all very knowledgeable on what's going on in the Parks. And they have a big plate, lot on their plate with all the departments they have and all the programs they have under Parks and Rec, they have all that. Plus, they all get along good with the staff in there. And the staff works really hard on it in that office. But I just think it'd be a big confusion to combine both of them. And what I'd like to see is that maybe you take... Put the Trails in with the Parks and take two of the commissioners from the Streets and Trails and Utilities Commission and put them on there to work with it. I think a seven-person commission would be a lot better than nine. And then if you want to reduce it, if somebody goes off, you didn't... You know, you can vote whether to replace them or not. But I just think it'd be too confusing to put the whole session in there. I think it'd be better if you just... If the Public Works staff took care of the Streets and the Utilities and let Parks take care of the Trails, that'd be my recommendation.
You've talked enough. Chad, any discussion?
Yes. I agree with Berwin, but I can do that. I agree with Berwin to keep it separate. But I think right now what we need to do, and this is... I would like to keep that Trails Commission back up to five, at least, to a full contingent for at least one more year until you get what you said you were going to get done and put it underneath Park or Rex and work on that standard plan, work on that master plan for the Trails. Because it's going to take a full commission and it'll probably take you a good year to get it done. And that way, if and when we do get money, we can start this thing and have it up and running. And if you feel later on you want to bring it back and we can reduce that to three people, but right now, I don't want to see Park or Rex Commission get bombed down in the minutia of working on Trails. That's my idea on it. But I'll support that part about it as far as trying to get it going for at least, take away from Public Works, give it to Park or Rex, and let it go from there.
Just for clarification, on a commission's point of view, that works operationally, it doesn't, because I don't have the personnel that Public Works has to do what little work they do on a Trail system.
I don't want to do the physical part.
That still is David and Paul's first for our city, Brian.
That would be true. What I'm talking about...
The commission's role.
The commission's role of developing these standards in that and this master plan.
And I don't have a problem with that. I'm sure Chad does it, yeah.
I mean, again, we... Because of the fact we still maintain the Trails, we're always participating. We would participate as Public Works with Parks in those discussions. Because again, we manage it, we need to be able to give them input on what that impact could be potentially on that suggestion, how will we do our master plan? Because we're going to maintain it in the end.
Andy, would you like to comment on that?
Just from an organizational standpoint, back to Councilmember Hoffman's suggestion to have... From an organizational standpoint, back to Councilmember Hoffman's suggestion to have Trails, five-member people, I'm sure it's a commission, be under Parks and Rec Commission. I don't understand. Does that make this five-member people a commission that have reporting abilities to the City Council? Or are they just a subcommittee of the Parks and Recs? Just roughly, how is this proposed to work?
If anything, they'd be an advisory committee at this point. Because they don't have any... They don't report to City Council now. And we... Well, okay. But we've never seen the minutes from what they do, same as Park or Rex. So but, you know, if it means just three people on it or four, I just... My thought on this is that I would... I don't want to hurt our current Park or Rex Commission by adding four other people whose really intention at this point and their focus should be Trails. And if it means that it'd be a separate... It would be the same commission, just call it the Trails Commission? Or you can call it the Trails Committee or a subcommittee of the Park or Rex Recreation Committee? That's fine.
What it would require though is a revised ordinance. If you're going to leave the commission as is and backfill the one empty spot, if that's what you choose to do, then you need to change the ordinance. Because the ordinance right now has a scope of work that is far greater than just Trails. And so that would need to come back to this committee council to be revised, if that's what your choice is tonight. Because right now, the way the ordinance just for the Streets, Trails, Utilities Commission has a bunch of other parts to it. You're saying, or what I'm hearing, is that they need to be focused on Trails and not those other parts.
And they need good parts.
And that's what needs to come back as a revise, if that's the direction of my council. And then the commission would remain. You still keep the same commission, they just would... Their duties and scope would be different. Or less expanded than what it is right now. Okay. Kevin?
Well, I think they should be joined. I think that one of the problems that we have is that we compartmentalize our city and our Trails. We are a recreation-based city, period. And anybody who thinks differently is just wrong. Because we... Everything is based on equestrian activities, large lots, everything we have. We have a Trail system that the system as it works now... I was a commissioner for 10 years. Streets and Trails folks don't have enough to do. Just flat don't have enough to do. And so what we would do is if we brought all those people together, the Streets are connected to the Trails, you would literally look at it in a more holistic point of view. And that's really how a lot of cities are encouraging, and probably Steve knows this, cities are being encouraged to look holistically. I mean, walking trails, how do people get from point A to point B? So we have this gigantic Trail system that we just simply haven't taken care of. In terms of combining the two commissions, I think that all get along great. I think eventually we probably would limit it, maybe as people left. But I think that it's the way to go. And I understand we want to separate it, but folks, it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. Our Trails look terrible. And so now we can say, "You now will take care of Trails." Well, what they have to do is really go out and figure out ways to raise money. But one of the ways to raise money is you begin to tailor your grant... I wrote grants for years. Tailor your grants, give them something that you create and tailor for the grant. And so I think that... I just think we put those two commissions together and really focus on Trails together and connect them to the Parks, to the open space and for one of large lots. I just think that's the way to go, but I'm on my way.
I don't mean this offensively, but I kind of took a couple of your comments the wrong way. And that was, you had a very passionate talk, Brian, and you make your case, and I understand that. You did make some references to, when you had this discussion with both commissions and talking about tax revenue measures, that don't get too big for your riches, okay? That it's... And I don't mean that in a mean way. It's just, it kind of makes me think that large of a commission. And then Chad, you made a comment that, "Well, there really is no work for Streets and Trails, so let's throw them over here." And it's like we're getting away from the passion and the way that we had on all these different commissions that from planning, and I know Steve would agree with this, if something came to the Planning Commission, it was, "Did Streets and Trails look at it?" "No, if they didn't, we stopped and then went back to Streets and Trails." We did that numerous times. Or, "What did Parks say about it?" Your Parks Commission right now is, they're very passionate, okay? Your Planning Commission's very passionate. And your Streets and Trails Commission, I would like to see the same way. So it's just kind of troubled with the "don't be too big to fail" in a sense. But maybe the Streets and Trails Commission needs to be challenged with a master plan and put them to work on it. But I think it belongs over in Public Works. That your Parks Commission is great. And you get things done. But sometimes I get concerned that, "I don't want to pile that much on you, Brian." You do. I mean, you don't... It's like, "You just give me more, I'll get it done." And I'm trying to say, "You've got plenty." So I'd like to see Chad generate more work for your commission. You know, I'm working on a master plan, Streets and Trails.
And again, I don't want to clarify that we couldn't find them something to do. I guess where I struggle with in understanding is that Brian's commission is, I guess, maybe more functional in that, again, the things that they're working on are financially supported. So they're looking to do things with the money they're supported. Our group is not financially supported. To functionally do the things that I would ask them to help you decide to do, you could do a master plan, but it's a book on a shelf if the council's not going to find a way to fund anything. It's really an exercise in futility. They can make the best document in the world, but if there's no funding there, it's a little bit of a disgenuous effort. But that's what I'm just trying to make sure is that. Because I will build anything. You give me money, I will build till the tunnel goes down. And that's what I do now. And one area is I can't do a lot with is Trails because there's not a lot of focus there funding wise. So if the money's there, certainly there's a lot more work to do, talk about what Trails you could do, how we could do, what the engineering-wise issues are related to getting that Trail up to a standard we want, because we have standards. It's just a question of, money's there, what Trails do we want to augment? Whether we want to get the backyard Trails up and running in better condition than they've ever been and et cetera. Certainly there's things, but when you don't have the money behind it, it becomes tough to have the energy behind the effort, I guess, especially for me, to ask them to put something together that I know in the end will go nowhere. And that's where I struggle with. I bring a Street project, it's because I'm going to build it. I have the money already.
But then is there a way, are you saying that Parks and Rec has all the money to do Trail stuff?
No, no, that's not the issue. It's just more of, there is a nexus between Trails and Parks because they are connected. And that if they can have a discussion about a Trail, like you said, if there was a request from Planning Commission, did the Parks and Public Works Commission view this Trail issue? Well, they can talk about it. It can be taken to them and they can...
There's a nexus between Streets and Trails also.
Sure. Like I said, I have no issue keeping the committee. I'm just being honest and frank because I don't have a lot of work for them to do. And that's my concern. My goal is to try to allow them to have more, participate in what they want to do. And if I don't have information about Trails, especially if they're meeting on a monthly basis, they can participate in Parks. And they've grown, they're very well-made, enjoy it, and be a very functional part of that group? I don't know. But the goal of this, and what was presented at the beginning when I first came here, was about that combination was, yeah, then it seems to make sense because it allows people to participate. And in this case, we can raise another area that they don't currently do. That's the only motivation for me, is recognizing, if you want me to find stuff for them to do, I can do it. But it's, my concern is this kind of exercise in futility. Unless there is a longer goal, might, just to be frank, from the council, somehow get us the funding to build the things that they're trying to give you direction on. That's my only concern, is that I can absolutely do a master plan for the Trails. Not a question. I can have them participate in that. Whether I do it internally as staff, or when I hire a consultant, and I would review it with them. Say, "What do you think about these elements, that elements? What do you think should be changed?" And we can do that document, have it done. It's not a question, but it can be done, absolutely.
There's a good document already. It's been on the shelf, what, 25 years? Cal Poly Comonor did it. We can pull that one out and just dust it off. It's got Trails in it and everything, it's a good one.
Yeah, but it's more related to open space. It doesn't have a real review of our Trail system. Just to add, Mr. Mayor, the comment wasn't, when we had the discussion with the joint meeting, it wasn't really about... It wasn't really about a tax measure. What it was is that we have to find ways to fund this particular parts of our infrastructure that are important. And whether that be a tax measure, a grant, or whatever. So it wasn't meant for more than that. But it meant that our point was is that somewhere as a community, somewhere as a commission and staff, council, we have to find some way to figure out how to put more, as what Chad said, into our Trail system. It's an important part of who we are. Absolutely. But you know, part of that whole thing, Brian, was, it's kind of the passion of all the different commissions. And you have a great commission now. Look at your commission, how many years ago when Mark Harbin was chairman for 10 years? Kevin was on that commission. And Streets and Trails, when Bob Wright was on Streets and Trails, Malcolm, Donna Johnson. Remember when she pulled all the screws out of her back because Harvey wanted a fire for this meeting? But so you had all these passionate people. You had the St. Martin Planning and Historic Commission and all of that. So it's kind of like, maybe that's some of the essence you need also. And it concerns me that would that dilute the Parks Commission? Maybe that's the case. Because I, one of the things I thought about is, for the Streets and Trails commissions, is a refocusing. Sometimes maybe they are caught up in so much of the other minutia that they don't get. Back in the days, when you're... Because I mean, a long time. The people you're talking about were so vested into Trails and wanting to make it better and volunteering and doing whatever it took, where if maybe their plate is so big and thinking about too many other different things that really fall into maybe more the preview of the Planning Commission, unless it comes back to them, that they somehow have lost that focus of where this will all work. Which is one of those focuses, is how do we get money to do this? What's important to us? I remember years ago, we used to do a lot more work groups of volunteering and stuff. So, but that came from that passion of the group. Yeah. It was the passion and it wasn't always because of money. It was, you know, let's live our wits. Let's live by our wits and how are we going to be smarter? Well, and part of that, that commission back in those days was also making sure that the community knew, "You need to help take care of the Trail too. It's not all Public Works." And they would focus on selling that message to the point they would tell people, "You need to clean the Trail." And I think, okay, maybe that's...
And I think, okay, maybe that's-
There's a project, something-
Interdiction there, but I do know that that's, you know, that, maybe that's, the problem is their focus, I'm not-
Those are my concerns. So we're looking for a recommendation.
Does that mean you're looking for a motion?
A motion, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, that we take the trails, put it over in the parks, and add two commissioners to the Parks and Rec Commission, and let Public Works handle their streets and utilities.
Under discussion on your motion, so you want the members to go to 11?
No, I think it'd be better if we redid it and just get the five Parks and Rec Commissioners and take two of the current Commissioners on the Streets and Trails, I mean, yeah, on the Streets and Trails and move over there, maybe seven, seven person commissioners.
Okay, so, so we have nine commissioners right now, so you're saying eliminate two commissioners?
Yep.
Do you have that?
Can't get quorum, you move two of them.
So you're saying it's a functional, there's just two people left, it's not a quorum. So you're saying, you want to just do away with the streets, the utilities commission?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be my idea, is just move the trails over to parks and let Public Works take care of the streets and the utilities.
So you're saying we run the top staffs, you mean?
Yeah.
You need top staff to take care of streets?
Well, that's what I understood you had to say earlier, that the commission don't have anything to do to take care of the streets and the utilities, that staff, that needs the professional people, the engineers and everything, and I agree with you on that.
Do you have, there was a motion without a second?
Second.
Further discussion? How do you propose to reduce the members from nine to seven?
I'll come up with a good idea, that'd be for you to decide.
Well, there's two ways that I know of.
For what it's worth, that you do this, this is going, what you're doing is taking this, it'll come back next time out as a different ordinance.
What if, what if you allowed it to just downsize by attrition? What if you did that? So you took the nine and then you just let it downsize by attrition?
But I have a concern with that, that, that if, if you look at who comes up next, okay, on expiration?
Yeah, I get it.
That, I'm not supporting that.
Well, let the, let the ones that's on Streets and Trails, that won't be on Parks, apply, and we could pick two out of the, out of the box, add two. How would that work?
Yeah, yes, I mean, if I understand what you're suggesting, is one, eliminate Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission, period, here in the ordinance. And amend the Parks Recreation Commission to include trails and expand it to seven members, and solicit applications for those two, keep in mind that anybody that's in Streets and Trails obviously can apply.
So you had kind of, so is that what his motion said then? Can you, can you?
In a sense, yeah, except that you can't do that tonight anyway. So that if, if that's what you want to do, then just come back with, I guess, maybe one ordinance could probably do it, an ordinance amending to what the requirements are for Parks and Rec and their size, and eliminating Streets, Trails and Utilities. What, could, could you say tonight, that you just want to leave things the way they are? If the council's direction is, you've heard what we had to say, you have to go back and figure something out that you're happy with and bring it back to us, yes, you can do it. In terms of the respective roles of the two commissions, or potentially one commission? Yes, you can. Right, right now you have a motion, which I think that we interpreted as meaning eliminate Streets and Trails, expand the role of Parks and Rec, and increase the number by two. And yet there's a second for that motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, yeah, a second.
Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Benmeyer?
No.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Well, it's just, it's either, so we're done, or somebody's like, send a motion over here.
I'm not, see if I can make this a motion, but I'd like to send this back to staff for more work on this combination, under the, under what council members gave as their input as to direction, if that's okay with the city manager. I don't know if you need an emotion, but I think staff now got some direction and some fact that we're most of the city.
Since you made a motion, you may as well send it.
We send it back to staff and, make a motion, we send it back to staff and let them work on it.
Second.
Mayor, may I ask a question, just for direction? Is recruitment a period for the city clerk's office for all commissions? And so with these vacancies, I just want to get clear on, if we're bringing this back, am I proceeding with recruitment for the vacancy on Streets, Trails and Utilities, and the upcoming vacancy on Parks and Rec? Or am I holding up on that until a further decision is made?
If I could, based on what council is elected to not do, I would just leave the commission as it is and build a decision.
Sure, does the code require that you do anything within a specific time?
Well, within 30 days ahead of notice, the vacancy for Streets, Trails and Utilities, but this was put on hold to see if the council would agree on the consolidation of this commission, so it was put on hold.
Except that the judicial code requires that you do it?
I do, yes, I am required to fill this vacancy.
I don't think you have any, you can choose not to select anybody, but I don't think that, under current code, the city clerk doesn't have the discretion to say, no, I'm not going to approve, so.
I think it would be best to approve.
And for the Parks Recreation Commission?
And just follow the code.
So we have a motion from Mayor Newton, and a second from Mayor Newton.
What is the motion? It's quite confusing.
No.
Councilmember Benmeyer? No. Councilmember Bash? No. Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion fails.
So, just so it's clear, the mod one, there's nothing changed.
Okay, I have number eight.
You got it correct.
Yeah. City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications.
I just have a question. We've had an email, all of us, maybe you had it too, from the Enslies, about the erosion of River Road, River Road and the erosion that's happening, they live right by the river, and there's a lot of erosion in front of this, that just passed their street, and I'm wondering where we are with the Army Corps of Engineers, I mean, it was pretty dramatic the photos they showed us, as we get in minus weight, kind of underneath the road.
I haven't received any information, I'm welcome receiving that.
Okay.
I think it was something you and I went over, for the road.
Yeah.
River Drive.
River Drive, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah, political, I'm sorry. That was an Army Corps of Engineer area?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, we've contacted a couple times and they failed, by email and phone call, to respond to.
We, I, you know what, I can't, can we maybe agendaize that situation, because it's actually undermining the road.
I don't think it's gotten to the road.
Well, the guy said, I mean, the, the far, I went over there, and if you stand down below, it's like eating into their-
Yeah, it's-
That's range bad.
It's under the road, Chad, because that neighbor, my neighbor's one that went over and had a picture made in that cave. And also, while you're on that circuit, Kevin, you've been down Bluff towards River?
Yes.
It's the same way over there. Dangerous for them to go out in that big rain.
So it could be a jam.
We have a meeting with the Corps relating Corridor, so perhaps maybe we can add these two other areas to that, and then Chad, Sam and I can meet with them out there and take them around to these other locations, because the flood stabilization, it's off of River Drive, might also involve Berseit County Flood Control as well, because there's a joint understanding on that site, and I'm not sure who oversees which area, so.
So-
We could be back to the council after we have more information.
We'd also need to check on the fencing, the ownership of that fencing.
That's one of the questions I've been trying to get answered, Brian.
Anything else, Kevin?
Nope.
Ted?
Yeah, Kevin and I, Kevin and I get to go to Southern California Association of Governments tomorrow and Friday, which is well off the Palm Desert and a hundred degrees Celsius.
Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Robert?
I just have one bit of news to share from Norco High School. So February 26 through March 1st, we had our WASC accreditation team come and visit, and we were notified today that Norco High School has been granted a six-year accreditation with mid-cycle review, which is the highest accreditation that you can get from WASC, so I thought I'd share that with you.
What else?
Andy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was in the council, just a quick update on the Hamna Avenue Bridge project. So last week, myself and Public Works Rec met with representatives from County Department of Transportation, Caltrans, T1 Lane International, which is the design team for the half project, Western Riverside Council of Governments, as well as representatives from RCTC. The purpose of this meeting was, because of the passage of SB 1 and SB 132, the, this transportation package, among other things, provides 6.3 million dollars to the Riverside Transportation Efficiency Corridor as gear mark for the Hamna Avenue Bridge project. It is to be noted that WRCO Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, have previously identified that as a local margin funding source for the bridge. So with this, there is now, this special payment from the state, there is an opportunity to reprogram the funds that were previously identified in town, to use as additional number of avenue improvement. And, but the takeaway from the meeting essentially is that, in addition to this gear mark, what has now happened is that the County Department of Transportation, as well as the Caltrans, are now putting the Hamna Avenue project on a fast track business to complete it. And along that line also, there were a couple of two, two outstanding issues previously, memory, the, the idea of rehab intended in the bridge versus replacing the entire bridge. And now that issue is resolved, that the bridge will be entirely replaced instead of rehab intended. There was another issue as to how wide the bridge would be. Previously, there was a thinking that it could be done with four lanes, now there is an agreement that the bridge would be done six lanes. And they're obviously doing the six lane improvement will require some additional improvements on, on, on our side of the, of the bridge, between the bridge and Detroit Avenue. We're hoping that the, the money that was previously identified to town would be used to do that, that piece of the project. Additionally, we're also hopeful that any remaining fund from the 6.5 million dollars that was previously identified in town can be reprogrammed into additional improvements in the C of Norco. With the, the revised schedule, they are looking to deliver the project in 2023, with construction estimated to commence in 2020, but they, they can be done sooner rather than later. Some of the other things that are obviously involved in the project, the long lead, item there is about, you know, documentation and clearance, and I believe a task force has already been formed to discuss with people at the state level, to make that process a lot faster, so that the project can be delivered soon.
Thank you. Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
There is one thing. Do we have a meeting tomorrow morning with fireworks? I've been thoroughly confused with all the emails, I know you-
Yeah, I apologize, I confused myself. So yes, there is a, like I explained in the email, I was trying to bifurcate the process, because I couldn't get everybody together at the same time. We have the social media aspect, the educational aspect, and then we have the actual deployment strategy, and that's the meeting tomorrow, is deployment strategy. I've taken care of, of the educational information with Kelly, so I think we're good to go there. Now we have to look at the deployment strategies, and we have a tentative plan that we put together, but there's costs associated with that, and I'd like to review that with the city manager at some point, but tomorrow, we'll be working with our, our partners in FIRE to further develop that.
Okay, and that's at nine?
Nine thirty, and, yeah, we can host that in our office, in our conference room.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
I'll be there.
Thank you. Gina?
Just a reminder that if you have any questions regarding the budget, the preliminary budget, please feel free to come by, and we're available, and I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work on it, from the cover to the tabs, to everything inside, it was definitely a team effort, and the, working with them on it was wonderful as well.
Appreciate it. Brian? Steve? Chad? Cheryl? Yes, you do. Town hall meeting.
Town hall, the Norco Community Town Hall meeting will be called on Monday, May 15th, at Delaware Hall, listed by the Norco Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm still working with the chamber on finalizing the agenda, but preliminary agenda has secondary access for Norco College. access for Norco College, and emergency preparedness by the Fire Department, and Southern California Edison Gas Company, I believe Chief Frank, etc.
Yes, and you've got the emergency management department.
And I believe you have some updates from Senator Roth's office, as well as Assembly Member Chalantiz's office.
Good. Thank you. Well, if there's anything else, or nothing else, I'd like to close this meeting in the memory of Ray Dees, and I'd like Ted to say a couple of words, please.
Ray passed away late, middle of last month, and Ray, I'm not going to say former Marine, because you never, a former Marine, served in Vietnam early in the 60s. He was an advisor in the early times. He was a member of our executive committee for the Veterans Park, and so he's going to be missed. He also, hopefully, will be dedicating our new USA sign up there to him, you know, let's go. Take a moment of prayer for Ray, I appreciate it, as we close our meeting.